Call the meeting to order. It's 5:30. It is May 24th. This is the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting. I would like to start with the moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. Commissioner Lawrence, here. Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Dric.
Here.
Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
And Commissioner Plank.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is correspondence. This evening we have correspondence from Santa Lac, Alpena, Menominee, Alger, Muskegon, and Dickinson Counties, looking for a resolution to receive and place on file.
So moved. Lawrence, support. Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Lawrence, support by Commissioner Plank. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Reader?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. And Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number six on the agenda is our first call to the public. Citizens wishing to address the Board of Commissioners this evening. If you are here in the meeting room, just raise your hand if you are on Zoom. If you use the raise your hand feature or wave at us, we'll call you to speak. Everybody has three minutes. We only ask that you give your name and address before speaking. And then I, just as a reminder, this is your opportunity as a citizen to present information that you feel has importance to the Board of Commissioners. It is not intended to be a two-way conversation. So we'll start first with, see if there are any hands raised here in the meeting room. We'll start with Mr. Williams.
Hello, my name is Steve Williams. My address, 5118 Hinche Road, Hall, Michigan, Marion Township. This is where I grew up, and this is also where I spent many hours since I was in grade school, defending Livingston County against what I consider unreal accusations of racism, home of the Ku Klux Klan, all kinds of other things. You know, you're familiar with me. You know that I travel. I've been in the military for 28 years, and it is amazing how many different times has I sat down with somebody, maybe I'm trying to recruit them into my unit or something, and they say, you know, sir, that place doesn't have a real good reputation with my people. And imagine my surprise when the highest legislative body in the county raises a specter of racism once again, for no reason. This is non-rebottled, but you can still raise your hands. And I'd like to know how many people have actually attended that DEI training that's offered by the Metro Parks? How many dialed in to the Metro Parks presentation, the first in the speaker series that was available, that was advertised in the local media, and that was just last month? Did anybody dial in to witness that? How about a show of hands of the people, you know, I was just here a month ago with the director. She specifically asked if there are any questions about the Metro Parks, if there are any problems, any concerns, feel free to contact her. Did any of this commission, any member of the commission, call her or email her? You know, I didn't, I did not think so. You know, as you go through this process, I was listening to WGR on my way out here from work, and they happen to be promoting the M Street Bakery. And the M Street Bakery is getting a big plug, and what's going to come next? Oh, Livingston County, in the news again for racism. Unfounded or not, that's the way it's going to be perceived. How many people do you think are going to trek on out here when they think that somehow there's some boogeyman here that's going to go after them because of our history, whether it's valid or not? I don't think it's valid, but this is not the right way to go. You know, what are you, as commissioners, going to tell the property owners in the county when you're putting their property values at risk because people are going to think this isn't a friendly place to move? What about all those, the class of 2021, as they go off to college, they go in the military? How are you going to tell them to answer the charges that I myself have answered for the past 50-some years about racism in Livingston County? Or maybe those employers that we know have to truck people in from the city, from Lansing, from Plant, to fill the jobs here, and we know that employees are a shortage in the whole state, how are you going to tell them that, well, I went ahead and allowed this to be, to be scrutinized and play up our... We'll see you at the second call of the conference and answer any questions during the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else in the room would like to address the board? Please step forward to the speaker. Or the microphone.
Hello, my name is Jessica Hamlin from Osceola Township. I would first like to start off by expressing my support of appointing Tammy Carlon as a new representative for the Huron Clinton Metro Parks. I would also like to express the importance and the urgency of Livingston County adopting a resolution like the Muskegon County's resolution regarding the vaccine passports. Not only are vaccine, are vaccination records private health information, but they are also a personal choice of the individual person themselves, and if they so choose the advice from their primary doctor. It is not a matter to be handled by any government as a forced mandate in order to freely move, participate, or exist in a public setting, nor should it be a matter of limited services to any person who utilizes their individual medical freedoms. This vaccine is authorized for emergency use. By mandating proof of vaccine through a passport will further course a person's decision to avoid loss of freedoms. It was not the government's right to strip us of our freedoms in the first place, and we should not have to be subjected to medical mandates to gain our God-given inalienable rights back. Not only does the vaccine passport threaten the rights and freedoms of individuals, but it will also place businesses, schools, and children in immense harm once again to fulfill the governor's agenda. The governor who consistently does not follow her own mandates and restrictions, and who also has not provided the information and science backing her decisions. Michigan law has medical, religious, and philosophical vaccine exemptions already in place. Also, under Michigan law, you have the option to exclude yours or your child's immunization record or information from the Michigan Immunization Information System at any time. It is critical to preserve legally protected fundamental human rights on issues related to health freedoms. No one should feel coerced, pressured, or forced into a medical decision through power or abuse of power. We are asking you, our county representatives, to take a righteous stand against vaccine passports as this product was granted emergency authorization usage. Potential benefits and risks of such use, the extent of possible benefits and risks are unknown. Make decisions based solely by the Constitution and our state laws, and stand against the discrimination and division of two classes of citizens. We are taking notice who will and will not support the men, women, and children of this county and state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. Anybody else here in the room like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Hello. My name is Danielle Anjo, and I am in Brighton Township. My words are going to echo a lot of what Jessica said. No one should be forced or coerced into making medical choices. That is exactly what a vaccine passport would accomplish. The grocery shop, patron of restaurant, theater, pretty much anything in public. Not only that, it violates health privacy and protection. No one has the right to your health records besides you and your healthcare provider. Even people that work at hospitals, if they're not on your case and they're not assigned to you, they still can't review your records. That's how private they are. Adopting a Muskegon resolution would be a win for everyone. People who want to receive the shot can do so, and at their own discretion can provide documentation only if they feel that they would like to do so on their own free will. And those who do not feel comfortable getting the shot because, A, it's not FDA-approved, test studies have not been completed, it was rushed to market for emergency use, they don't feel, so they won't feel pressured to making that choice because it can't be reversed. So what I'm asking you is, please adopt the Muskegon resolution and do not allow vaccine passports in Livingston County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Mr. Wallahan?
Dan Wallahan, Genoa Township. First, I'm going to say I agree with the comments on vaccine passports. I am opposed to any of your papers, please, type of situations. I also have a couple of things here. First, I agree with many of the board members in opposition to critical race theory. I think it is a topic that's made by white liberals to make money by dividing the races. Secondly, I think Steve Williams is a good guy. He's a straight arrow, and I would support his reappointment. Next, on the, I think I'd like to see this commission open up, and by that, let's have everything in person. We have the governor who just got caught at the land shark of all places, violating the norms, and then afterward rescinding some of the, some of the regulations after she got caught. Now, I don't know why anyone over 25 would go to a land shark, but that's just me. But I think it's time for the means to return to in-person, end the Zoom stuff, and get things back to normal here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallahan.
Hello, my name is Jason Ringette. My address, 2326 Doris Drive, Brighton, Michigan. Vaccine passports are nothing but an overreach of government into we, the people, privileged lives. We are a constitutional republic, not a democracy. This isn't Nazi Germany in the 1940s needing to show documents that we have been vaccinated, or if we choose not to get vaccinated. Please vote no on vaccine passports. Critical race theory has been designed by the radical left movement, which pitted one group of people against another group of people, which is racist, abusive, and discriminates against one's color. We do not need to divide or belittle people pitting one race against another race. Hitler did this to the Jews in Germany, which led to ethnic cleansing over 6 million Jews. Think twice before you indoctrinate racist theories. It will destroy us from within like cancer. The Washington Times says, "Critical race theory components believe American is fundamentally mentally racist and must be racist and must be overhauled." A process that starts with defining people by their skin color. White people are inherently oppressors according to the bedrock of tribalism theory, which practice often also divides people by their sex, sexuality, gender identifies, and other aspects. Dan Bongino said this the best. Critical race theory is by nature. I'm going to ask you a question and expect an honest answer. If, in a sense of critical race theory, is that people should be judged by the color of their skin, I'm asking a very simple question. How is it not the definition of racism? Doesn't it matter if you're a decent person, good person, or a bad person? You will be judged immediately simply by the color of your skin. If you happen to be white, like I am, lacking a certain pigment in your skin, you are an oppressor. Can you define who I am oppressing, please? CRT is nothing more than Marxism on steroids. Board of Commissioners, please elect Tammy Carlon to the Metro Parks Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ringette. Anybody else in the room would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Yes, ma'am. Ilona?
I'm Ilona Rug, Allison Lane. I have two things that I wanted to speak on, and I also do support Tammy Carlon, by the way. The two topics. First is being, first is the $6 million of taxpayer money that is being spent on the private entity, the Detroit Riverfront Conservancy. The Huron Metro Parks could use this money more, in a more productive way. For instance, for the parks in our communities, there are so many improvements that can be made to walking and biking trails, beach maintenance, workshops, and activities for adults and children, new plannings, playground equipment. How about some new bathrooms or concession stands on our beaches? How about paying down any debt that the parks have? Go figure that. The second thing I wanted to speak on is the diversity, equity, and inclusion in social justice being implemented. You act as if there are riots in the parks between races right now. You act as if this is going to fix something. If anything, you are creating fear, anger, frustration, racism, and conditions where people have to tiptoe not to hurt anyone's feelings. You are creating racial strife. All of this makes a person and the staff at the parks feel dehumanized and demoralized. It is not an issue, but now it is because you are making it an issue. You are continuing to perpetuate this by saying you want to eliminate racism and put an emphasis on school-aged children with your programs at the park. It is not your job to parent our children. Are you kidding? You are a public park. Remember birds, bees, trees, trails? Stay in your lane and out of politics. This has nothing to do with what you are here for. This is not unity. This is what is being pushed in our schools as well. Kids are learning to hate and feel a low self-esteem with all of this junk. I know this because I am a public school teacher. So I ask you, are you willfully ignorant, or do you truly not know about our beautiful country's background? America has more opportunities for people than anywhere in the world. By the way, America did not invent slavery. It ended slavery. Americans are constantly told that their country is inherently bad because it relied on slavery. But not only was slavery practiced worldwide, America pioneered getting rid of it. Stay in your lane. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the room wish to address the Board of Commissioners? The gentleman in the, in the black hat.
I'm Brian Holden. I didn't realize I was going to be coming here today, so I didn't really prepare anything. But frankly, the Constitution allows us freedom of movement. And what I understand is that we are talking about vaccine passports and other such things today.
Chairman, the point of order, there are a lot of the folks that have either not given their name or their address. And I would just ask that, that if you haven't given your name and address, give it to the clerk. But I think it'd be instructive for all of us to know that. Just a point of order.
Thank you, Commissioner Helsman. I think you gave your name, but I don't know if you gave your address.
360 Kane Road.
Thank you.
Ultimately, there is no authority that is given to you through the Constitution to limit our freedom of movement. I have pulled my kids out of school because I refuse to have them taught critical race theory and taught to hate themselves because of the color of their skin. I grew up before Obama was president, and racism was never, never as bad as it was until he came into office. And from that point on, we've had to deal with all this nonsense. America, like she said, didn't invent slavery. We ended it. There's more opportunity for people of any color in this nation. I find what you guys are doing politically to be disgusting, and we're sick of it. Nobody here wants to deal with any of this nonsense anymore. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Just a reminder to provide your name and address.
My name is Ed Murray. I live at 12271 Germany Road in wonderful Fenton, Michigan. I've heard some other comments I didn't even know about. I was really concerned about the $6 million that was allocated to the Metro Park system, to a private entity. And my major concern is how that money was spent. And I feel strongly that there should be an audit to see exactly where that money went, how it was spent. And I think it's up to all of you to make sure you look into that because at this day and age, it's very easy to have something drop off the table and in somebody's pocket. And I've dealt with that personally on an international basis. I worked internationally for a company that I was employed with for seven years. I've been in over 50 countries. And I was always glad to get back to the good old USA because I realized how lucky we are, even with our current issues, that if you work hard and you strive, you can make something happen for your life, whether you're poor or whatever, if you take the opportunity to do it. I've been in eight countries alone in Africa, and I've seen more poor people than you can shake a stick at. I tried to do the best I could for everybody I worked with. And again, $6 million is a lot of money, and if somebody takes that money and doesn't do the right thing with it, shame on everybody because I'm a taxpayer. I've been in this county for 30 years. So I ask all of you to perform the audit and see exactly where all that money went to, how it was spent, and if there was any mistakes made, then we won't be doing that again. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Carlon. Just a reminder to provide your name and address.
Tammy Carlon, 3250 Chase Lake Road. I'm in Cahockt Township. Thank you for hearing from me today. After reviewing all relevant materials related to the Parks Board, I have a lot to say, but I will keep it brief. A couple of things to know about me that you will not see on my resume. I've used the parks heavily for many years, especially when raising my kids, being a Girl Scout leader, and my husband, a Boy Scout leader. I could draw a map of Kensington, for example, by memory. As you can see by my resume, my very line of work as a CPA and process improvement expert is to go to new organizations of varying industries to make them more efficient, effective, and financially sound. There has not been one organization or industry that I've worked for where we did not see huge success. I'm a daughter of the American Revolution with seven relatives that served fighting for our country and our freedoms. My dad has written several books from letters from my relatives, from fighting for our freedoms in the Civil War. I have relatives that have served since then, defending our hard-fought for freedoms. My cousin was an abolitionist that worked with John Brown, a very famous abolitionist, that got hung for his efforts fighting for blacks. I have a half-sister that is half Panamanian, and her husband is from Ecuador. We enjoy their huge Latino family very much. My niece, nephew, great-niece, and sister-in-law are black. So as you can imagine, so are many of my relatives down through their family trees. All people are to be loved and treated equally. This I stand firm on. But these things, our hard-earned tax dollars are being spent on, are not about that. People are being hoodwinked by great-sounding terms and half-thought-out ideas. It is actually a racist policy that will backfire for us in the Metro Parks, as it has everywhere else. It's been pushed. I know I've researched this and have educated others about the realities of these things for several years. I've brought you a related document today if you're interested. While it's, while it is rare, I am at a Metro Park where I am not near a person of color. I do see that the park system has done a terrible job making sure they reach all areas of the Metro Parks region in terms of staffing. A failure like that should be rectified. And maybe that includes having less white males on the board. I see you only have one female on that board. I am a female, and I'm also handicapped. You can see my red car out with the handicap tag right now. And clearly, I have a very diverse family. I have even spent time with the parks in a wheelchair. All this being said, a racist policy is not what we need.
Ms. Carlon, your time is up.
Well, I'll turn this in then because it's very important information.
Anybody else in the... Yes, yes, ma'am. Go. Just provide your name and address for the record.
My name's Sarah Shambres. I live on 8757 Pioneer Drive, Cahockt Township. I'm here for the passport resolution. Myself, I was vaccine-injured at five years old. They did not connect the dots until I was about 21 and in the hospital my whole life. My seven-year-old was vaccine-injured, and my two-year-old is not vaccinated, and she has no health problems at all. I don't think that it's fair for any government to mandate us to have a passport in order to do the same things other people are doing. That is the strongest form of racism and division. That, that's what this stuff is, everything that's going on right now is to divide us. We, we did make strides in segregation. People started coming together. So it looks like the government's trying to divide us again. So I strongly urge everyone, for me and my family, not to be able to participate in things normal people can do, that choose to get a vaccine or blindly follow what the government or the doctors say without doing their own research. It's just wrong, and I hope that you guys follow what the rest of this room's saying and vote no on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room wish to address the board? Seeing none, I will go to Zoom here and look for people with either the Zoom hand raised or just wave at us. So I, first up is Jacqueline Pike. So if you wait a moment, you'll be unmuted. Go ahead, Ms. Pike.
Thank you very much. Jacqueline Pike, 803 Fowler Street in Howell. I would just like to thank the board again for recognizing our efforts and allowing us to speak and have our voices heard. I did email every board member this week, twice actually, because I had to make a correction, and I only received a response from one of you, and that was only to ask for my address. So I just wanted to say, not only as a mother, but as a very concerned citizen of this county and someone who actually values individual freedom and liberty that was granted to us by God Almighty, the constitutions of both the Michigan and the US, I am urging you to adopt the resolution, just as Muskegon County has, and just as everyone else has asked, to ban vaccine passports in Livingston County. Not only would this be a gross injustice to personal freedom, but it would also open a whole new set of doors for ADA lawsuits, discrimination lawsuits, and it would be an enormous violation of HIPAA privacy laws, just to name a few. This truly is a slippery slope that we do not want to go down. We are only asking that you please look hard at the moral and ethics, and we do not, excuse me, and you do not want to know... Oh, sorry, my voice is not with me today. We want you to know what, we want you to do what you We want you to know what, we want you to do what you know is right by banning the use of vaccine passports as a bribe for freedom in Livingston County. We are also addressing and asking that this race theory that is being introduced and perpetuated in our society be quashed at every turn. We know, as every informed citizen should, that they are now actively supporting this at the Huron Clinton Metro Parks, just as everyone else has stated. I also want to thank you personally, Wes, for standing up against this. I very much appreciate that. Teaching our children that being white is now bad, and you're racist simply because you're born white blows my mind. We need to raise our children that no matter what their skin color is, that everyone matters. Stop this crap because that's exactly what it is. Stop it because, before it goes any further. We highly support and ask that you support the appointing of Tammy Carlon to the Metro Parks Board to help fight this detrimental message that being, that is being put out to not only our general public, but to our children. This has to stop, and it has to stop now. We have too much of this in our society, in our schools. I personally pulled my son from Livingston County schools, not only for this, for the masking, but this right here is ridiculous. I'm not going to have this shoved down his throat. We are homeschooling next year due to this. It's a detriment. We have family that are black.
Five seconds.
All nationalities, and this is ridiculous. Please do what's right and stop this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up on the, I see the hand raised of Jessica. So if you just wait a moment, you'll be unmuted so you can speak. You, you are unmuted.
Yep, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Jessica Bearfield. I live in Putnam Township. I had other things I was going to say tonight, but I feel like most of it has already been covered, so I'll condense some. As you guys discussed tonight, the possibility of joining with Muskegon and moving forward with your own resolution to ban vaccine passports in Livingston County, I will be paying very close attention to where each of you fall on such a resolution and who believes in protecting our rights and who believes in administering my property without a right to do so. As a resident of your county, I would urge each of you to vote yes on taking the next steps towards passing a resolution in Livingston County banning vaccine passports. I would also like to voice my support for appointing Tammy Carlon to the Metro Parks Board. Like everyone before me, teaching children they are inherently racist because they are born white is the very definition of racism, and it has no place within our county or anywhere in America, for that matter. And then I also, like Jacqueline just said, would also like to thank Wes for being a voice that stands with freedom and choice in the Constitution. And that's pretty much all I have to say on that. So thank you for your time tonight and for hearing all of us.
Thank you. Next hand raised, I see is Ms. Judy Dobbin Meyer. So if you just wait a moment, you'll be unmuted. It looks like you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Judy Dobbin Meyer, and I live at 4490 Lakeshore Court in Genoa Township. I am here tonight to urge you to reappoint Steve Williams to the Metro Parks Board. Steve is someone who's very familiar with the parks, having served on the board already. And he's also very familiar with Livingston County. He is not a Johnny come lately who, six months ago, was listed as living in Novi. He's lived here his entire life, and he's very familiar with our county. The Metro Parks are a great value for Livingston County residents. We contribute $2 million to their $34 million budget, and the value of Kensington Park alone is worth that. So we all know this isn't about who is best qualified to be on that board. It's not about making the lives of Livingston County residents better in any way at all, like working on a real plan to bring broadband to all areas of the county. This is about stirring up the GOP base with phony culture war issues so that the chairman can appoint a buddy who will do him a favor down the line. If you look at the other items on the agenda tonight, you'll see that the commissioner is trying to put himself in charge of all the appointments in the county so he can put more friends on boards and commissions and then call on them for favors when he runs for higher office in a few months or years. This isn't about what's best for the parks, what's best for Livingston County, or even about spending money on things you don't like. It's all about Wes Naugigiri's political scheming for a bigger job. So I'd ask the other commissioners to please not be led around by the nose by Wes and put the people of Livingston County first, not his political future, and reappoint Steve Williams. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbin Meyer. Looks like up next is Anna Penella. Hope I got that right. So if you just wait a moment, there, there you go, you're unmuted. If you just give your name and address, that would be great.
Perfect. Thank you. My name is Anna Penella. I live at 11603 Eagle Way in Brighton, Michigan, Brighton Township. I follow the support of the majority of people who have spoken regarding banning vaccines passports in Livingston County and hope that we join the resolution with Muskegon. That sounds fantastic. I also would like to say thank you to Wes. Unlike Judy, I don't know what she has personally against you. I feel like you are definitely supporting our township in the way the majority of us would like to see. I support the appointment of Tammy Carlon to represent the Huron Metro Parks. I am very against this idea of critical race theory and DEI. I don't know why we're looking to divide. I, I just feel like it's the wrong thing at this. I mean, it's always the wrong thing. But why, I feel like there's been such division in our country lately. Let's come together. Let's not come up with more reasons to not like each other. We're hopefully beyond this COVID craziness, beyond the masking, all this insanity that has just caused nothing but division. Let's come together. Let's not look for more reasons to divide, and let's definitely not waste our taxpayer money on anything that supports that. So thank you for your time, and I, I really appreciate you, Wes, for everything you've done for Livingston County.
Thank you. Next up is Dr. Jessica Garcia. If you just wait a moment, you'll be unmuted. You're unmuted.
Thank you. Mr. Naugigiri and the board, I sent this in an email earlier today, but I want to make sure it goes on record. I've also expanded it in response to some of the comments tonight. Mr. Naugigiri seems to take every opportunity to challenge efforts in our community to create a more diverse and inclusive experience for everyone. As chairman of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners, he was elected to represent the voices of all residents, not just those who align with his political views. In a recent post on his social media, Mr. Naugigiri called explicitly on all conservatives to back his endorsement for a new, more conservative representative on the Huron Clinton Metro Parks Board of Commissioners. In doing so, he blatantly dismisses the residents in our county who disagree with his personal agenda. Additionally, his goal is to establish Livingston County as a bubble in Metro Detroit, an island with no way on or off. The problem with an isolationist approach in politics and in relationships more broadly is that it also leads to alienation. Mr. Naugigiri forgets that the Huron Clinton Metro Park System includes 13 parks across multiple counties. Washtenaw, Oakland, Wayne, Macomb, and Livingston Counties work collaboratively to provide some of the most beautiful parks, trails, and golf courses in the country. We are fortunate to claim its jewel, Kensington, as our own. If Mr. Naugigiri gets his wish of positioning a partisan appointee to this role, one incapable of seeing the fiscal and social value of a park system that connects Metro Detroit with its neighbors from across the state, then we stand to lose the support of the board, as well as many of our visitors and potential hires. It should be noted that this will affect the entire county in this regard, not just the metro parks. The Huron Clinton Metro Parks has the respective park systems across the country, and its latest steps to make them even more accessible has been described as visionary. Rather than capitalized on this as an opportunity to lead the state and the country into a future where the outdoors are safe and restorative for all members of a community, Mr. Naugigiri would have us slam the door. I would like to go on record as a resident of Livingston County and Brighton and implore this board not to bow to his motives again. Please vote to reappoint Steve Williams. On the topic of critical race theory, this is a framework established more than 40 years ago by lawyers and scholars of color, not white liberals, asking us not to judge people by their race, but to acknowledge that people are judged by their race and that access to resources and opportunities have been limited and allocated legally and de facto throughout history and into today. One only need to look at disparities in housing, education, or healthcare for this evidence. It is not about dividing races. It is not about teaching white people to be embarrassed or ashamed of their race. It does not identify individual white people as inherently racist or oppressors. It is a call for all of us to improve our systems and their functionality, and we cannot move forward productively as a community without an objective look at how we got here. That's how problems. To the educator that suggests we stay in our lane, this is my lane. I have a PhD in sociology with an emphasis on race with two decades of experience teaching race, ethnicity, and higher education. I would hope other residents and our elected officials would acknowledge their lack of expertise on this topic and respectfully sit down.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Next up, Ron Spakeoff. Just wait a moment, and you'll be unmuted. Just a reminder to provide your address, please. Go ahead, Mr. Spakeoff.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Ron Spakeoff, 357 Lennox Lane. I'm calling about DEI, which is being implemented in the, the metro parks. I got to tell you, I just read the DI plan about an hour before this meeting, and I was blown away how horrible it is. This is scary. Storming, norming, and performing. That's, that's in the plan. And if you don't know, if you've never heard of it, that's basically how to indoctrinate people who resist any of this left-wing garbage coming in. It, it showed them how to beat them down, and you know, something out of, something that the totalitarian government would do to indoctrinate its people. This is, this is out of a dystopian movie, to be honest. And, you know, I, whoever it is you point, I mean, this is a showstopper. I don't care how qualified this, your candidates are. This can't go forward. This is horrible. And I'd like to therefore endorse is Tammy Carlon. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spakeoff. Next up will be Janice Foster.
Hi, my name is Janice Karavich Foster, and I live in the 8th District, Green Oaks Township. And I want to Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I want to express my full support for Steve Williams to serve on the Metro Parks Board. He's an, he's experienced working with the parks, and he's a lifelong resident of Livingston County. He's done an excellent job, and he deserves another term. Livingston County deserves to be represented on the Parks Board, and I urge you to vote to support Steve Williams for Metro Park Board. I do not at all support Tammy, Tammy Carlon for this position. She has limited experience working with parks. She seems to be a politician looking to use the park board as a step to higher office. Also, her Twitter feed is full of conspiracy theories about election fraud that have been proven false time and time again. This is not who we want representing us on the park board from Livingston County. Let's keep the parks open to all residents of the metro area. Please vote to support Steve Williams for another term on the Metro Parks Board. And my address is 8734 Bonaventure Drive in Brighton, that's Green Oaks Township, and I am Jay Grose's district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Shelley Spakeoff.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I want to give my support for the appointing of Tammy Carlon. And I also want to speak, kind of echo what everyone else was saying about the vaccine passport. I think that it's very damaging to our society as a whole to push that through. So I, I hope that you do not let that happen. Also, I want to speak about the DEI at the metro parks. I think it's concerning that we're going to be spending about $6 million in taxpayer funds for this private, you know, entity to kind of educate us in diversity, equity, and inclusion. I also read through all the documents this morning, and I really don't understand how it benefits us taxpayers, how it actually benefits the park. Like my husband had said before me, it really does seem like indoctrination, and I don't stand for it at all, and I hope that you guys look into that and, you know, just stop this diversity, equity, inclusion, this rate, this critical race theory and implicit bias training because it's just dividing us, and it's not doing anything to the metro parks that we are all taking our tax dollars to pay for. So please consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Cindy Mich, Michnevitz. Hopefully, probably butchered that, but go ahead. Do we have Cindy? Oh.
Oh, hi. It's McNevich. I'm used to it being mispronounced. Cindy McNevich, I live at 3140 Shehan Road, Pinkney, Michigan. I'm also a Hamburg Township trustee. It seems like every other week lately, there's a news story regarding a shock-worthy statement made by Chairman Naugigiri. Earlier this month, the chairman questioned the Huron Valley Metro Parks funding for their diversity, equity, and inclusion programming. Everyone I know in Livingston County is proud of our local metro park systems and its management that is happy to allow everybody to have access to the parks, no matter what their race, gender, or ability. Now there is an attempt to replace Metro Parks' Stephen Williams with someone who has no experience. As a resident in the county and fellow elected official, I urge you to support Steve Williams' reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, next up is Dr. Caitlin Perry Dial.
Yes, hi, thank you, Caitlin Perry Dial. I live at 634 Nelson Street in Brighton in the city. So thank you for allowing the time and continuing this hybrid format. I've enjoyed watching these, these meetings from the, from my home as it's dinnertime right now, so there may be some, some background noise. But I wanted to speak tonight in support of the reappointment of Steve Williams. As a resident of Livingston County and of the metro area, I have enjoyed our metro parks immensely, and that is largely thanks to the management of Mr. Williams. DEI policies are prevalent all over our communities. You just now noticed them. And I want to say that I, I am really proud of Mr. Naugigiri for making the community aware of DEI and, and its importance in all levels of our community, in our parks, in our government, in our schools. But I would like to ask the commission to rein in Mr. Naugigiri and making these fake partisan wars and fanning these flames, flames of fear where it's unnecessary. It wastes the county's time, it wastes your time, it wastes my time. We, we will be a better community when we acknowledge that our strengths are differences. And there's no need to be afraid of it. On the point of vaccine passports, they're not a real thing. It's not going to happen. It never was a plan. So I don't, not quite sure what, what is the point of passing a resolution to ban vaccine passports? They're not real. We all have a vaccine record. We can look them up in our, at our doctor's office, and that's, that's pretty much it. I encourage everyone to get their vaccines, especially our COVID-19, so we can all go back to normal and appreciate our parks. One last thing, as long as we're questioning where our taxpayer money is spent, I would like to ask the board, where are the services promised from our veterans' millage? We still don't have them. Yep, I'm still paying taxes for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Joelle Pasarchik. Just wait a moment, and you'll be unmuted. And just a reminder to Just wait a moment and you'll be unmuted. And just a reminder to provide your address before speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Joellen Pisarczak, 4119 Howell Place, Howell, Osceola Township. I want to thank the board for this opportunity to give my opinion and also for everything you're doing to better the community. I think the Metro Park Board is clearly a board that needs some balance. The mission of the Metro Parks is not to educate children in critical race theory or the other titles it goes under such as implicit bias training or diversity, equity, and inclusion training. Critical race theory is a politically partisan idea. And if you don't believe that, you can simply look around and judge by who's for it and who opposes it. But it doesn't belong in any case in our parks. And it's an ideology that shames children based on their ethnicity. And frankly, as a former teacher and a human resource professional, I think that the damage that is done psychologically to children of this, from this kind of teaching is something that may be very, very difficult to undo. And I think we can all agree that some of the public policies that have greatly damaged children in the last year and a half due to the COVID, we've had enough of. But public policy with regard to how children are educated and raised is really not appropriate at the county level in the park service. So I'd like to see that just even not on the table as a consideration. I would also like to point out that sorry, I lost my place. Vaccine passports. There, it's a vaccine that's approved for emergency use. It's experimental. It would be dangerous to have a policy promoting the use of that vaccine in our county, and it's fraught with liability issues. Finally, I sent you all an email regarding Tammy Carlon, whom I have known for many, many years. And I hope that you read my email. You can please look back at it. I'm not going to go through it all now. But I can tell you that Tammy is well-equipped to help deliver a mission of recreational health, lifestyle, and educational benefits to the surrounding communities. Yes, she recently moved to our area following the death of her husband. She comes to us from Novi. She works, has worked extensively in public service all over Oakland and Livingston County and across the state of Michigan, as a matter of fact, advocating for children, advocating for positive educational benefits to children, of which the park service can certainly support.
You have about ten seconds.
Anyway, so I think that Tammy's diverse background and her expertise as a, in finance and elsewhere, would serve the county well. And I'm supporting her appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Glenn Gogaleski.
Yes, hello. Okay, thank you. My name is Glenn Gogaleski. I live at 5800 Cider Mill Drive in Fenton, Michigan, in the Livingston County 3rd District. First, as for vaccine passports, freedom will be officially dead when I need to show my papers for movement in our constitutionally limited republic. Next, I would like to thank Commissioner Wes Nakagiri for bringing the following issue to the attention of Livingston County residents. Currently, the candidate who seems to be destined to be placed on the Huron Clinton Metro Park Board of Directors is Mr. Stephen Williams, who up until now had no current opposing candidate competition. I agree with Commissioner Nakagiri in nominating Tammy Carlon to the Metro Parks Board of Commissioners. To only have one candidate running for a position is not responsible to the residents of Livingston County. My concern in having an additional candidate is based on Mr. Williams' agreement to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan for Huron Clinton Metro Parks. I am deeply concerned about this program and the level of leftist social justice orthodoxy that it brings into the metro parks and forces employees at all levels to embrace an essentially racist mindset to, ironically, end racism and develop policies based on identity politics. This is an extremely dangerous slippery slope which begins to segregate and identify people not based on their actions, words, or character, but on their racial identity, which in and of itself is racist. After a review of this plan, I was really amazed at the emphasis placed on nothing more than the racial makeup of employees of the park system. Page five simply outlines the park's racial employee makeup of white and people of color as if this is a concern and has any bearing on the services and quality of operations of the parks. And considering the fact that I am pretty much a news junkie and have not read or heard of any cross-burnings or lynchings by white supremacists in the Huron Clinton Metro Parks, I cannot think of a reason that there needs to be a program hiding behind the guise of such warm, fuzzy words as diversity, equity, and inclusion. Who could possibly be against those? But these terms are often the soft sell of leftist identity politics. Page 21 of the plan is where some really
Yeah, fifteen seconds.
definitions are listed, including confirmation bias, cultural appropriation, equity, implicit bias, institutional racism, microaggressions, and my all-time favorite, white privilege. It's bad enough that in our public schools and universities-
Your time is up. Sorry, Mr. Gogaleski.
Thank you.
Next up. Okay, let me call on Connie Robinson, and then I'll call on Janine Iyer. So thank you very much. I didn't notice. So Connie Robinson, as soon as you're unmuted, you have three minutes.
My name is Connie Robinson. I live at 9422 Clyde Road. I would like to start by saying there are no more important issues in our country right now than diversity, equity, and inclusion, or DEI, implicit bias training, or IBT, and critical race theory. This is the engine that is currently running our country off the tracks by a very small but well-funded minority whose ultimate goals and values do not align with most Americans. I also believe that many people who promote DEI and IBT could be well-meaning but uninformed about the true nature of the agenda they are pushing. Progressives are masters of deception and have wrapped their ideology in prepackaged with beautiful bows. America is rooted in the concept of equality for all individuals, but make no mistake, equality and equity are polar opposites. Equity is the concept of each group receiving the same outcome as the other. This means giving certain identity groups privileges to correct what some authority believes to be an imbalance. For instance, Chicago Mayor Lori Lightfoot will only speak with black reporters or prioritizing vaccine distribution to urban areas. That is racist. So in essence, the very programs designed supposedly to fight racism are actually steeped in racism. Equity is about redistribution based on skin color. This is Marxist ideology, and it flips the entire idea of the individual of liberty and America on its head. Critical race theory is based on the belief that our entire society is systemically racist. It is poison. Under the DEI umbrella, implicit bias training is central to critical race theory because it allows critical race theorists to find racism in every person, regardless of their actual behavior. DEI and IBT are precursors to critical race theory. Most agree that enslaving people was a terrible stain on our country, but no other country has done more to right that wrong. We lost 600,000 citizens in a civil war that was largely about freeing the enslaved. Amendment 13 prohibits enslavement, and the Civil Rights Act was signed into law in 1964. We elected a black president twice and currently have a black vice president. Mr. Williams' vote to support social justice, DEI, and his vote for a partnership with the Detroit Conservancy, whose funding of $6 million was discussed in the context of promoting DEI, demonstrates where his loyalties lie. Mr. Williams does not represent me, and I urge the board to support Ms. Tammy Carlon for the Huron Clinton Metro Parks Board. Ms. Carlon was elected by grassroots conservatives to be the vice chair of the Michigan Republican Party, making her much more aligned with the values in Livingston County. She is well-known for ardently fighting against the indoctrination of our children by common core and will bring that same vigor in fighting against racist indoctrination within our metro parks. Her CPA experience will be a great asset as she makes decisions affecting taxpayers harder and money. Thank you. Oh, and I adamantly oppose vaccine passports. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine Iyer, as soon as you're unmuted, you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, and thank you to the commissioners for hearing the public comments tonight. I also have concerns about how the money has been spent with the metro parks in the past, and I agree that this should be scrutinized. So I'm in support of appointing a new representative to the Huron Clinton Metro Park Board in the impervious of appointing her to represent Livingston County on the Metro Parks Board for the reasons detailed previously. I would also like to go on record that I am against attacking individual commissioners like I've heard tonight. Concerning vaccine passports, I am against vaccine passports for all the reasons mentioned by others. It is a thing, as these documents have been implemented in some European countries and in New York. Now, this board may not have policy responsibility in this area. However, I would strongly favor a resolution by this board not to allocate funds for implementing vaccine passports. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Johnkier. You'll have three minutes when you're unmuted. Just a reminder to provide your address before you start.
Yeah, Brian Johnkier, 350 West Caledonia Street, Howell, Michigan. I wanted to speak about the committee appointment process, and of course, that relates to the Metro Parks appointment issue. And I just want to say that, you know, from the standpoint of an elected official as a department head, I'm extremely concerned about this appointment process, which I understand is going to be modified, and I appreciate that. But currently, as it reads, there doesn't appear to be any outreach to ask a department from under which a committee or a board is situated what their recommendation is. And it almost solely appears to be a choice of the chair of the Board of Commissioners. That's very disconcerting, especially given a lot of the discussion tonight about pulling Steve Williams off of the Metro Parks Board. When somebody walks into my office, it really does not matter what party they come from, nor should it matter to any of you in terms of what the political leanings are of a candidate you're going to appoint to a board. I just hope you put the best person for the job in there, regardless of what their background is. I have very significant concerns, like a lot of my conservative brethren, about the diversity and equity issue. But I've also seen that being pushed from parent organizations, and I don't know the specifics of the vote that Mr. Williams had to take. But to base his removal on a single vote, I think is concerning. And, you know, our fellow conservatives here, we've been great at decrying the whole cancel culture process, and here we are engaged in it ourselves. I would ask that we don't sink to that level. We may have concerns, and I would express that to Mr. Williams. But in the end, I hope that you pick the most, the candidate that's best or most capable of taking on that position. Also ask that you make sure that the future rules for committee appointees include input from the department heads and a broader base for approval. So this does not become a political litmus test in which people that solely align with a single person on the board are chosen for committee appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnkier. Next up, John Wallbank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased to speak after Mr. Johnkier because he said a great deal of what concerns me regarding the appointments to our, you know, our different governing bodies that we depend upon for services in our community. Steve Williams is, as far as I know, and that's, you know, I've looked at it, has been a good representative. He's a good guy. Again, Mr. Johnkier said, look, there's one vote that you disagree with. Let's look at the whole picture. He's experienced. He knows what he's doing, and he's done a very good job, and he certainly deserves to be reappointed. You know, regarding the other issues that have been discussed, I don't especially have a dog in those fights. But, you know, I've known about critical legal theory and critical race theory for a long time. Learned about it in studying economics in my long-ago academic career. And it's unfortunate to see politicians creating a bogeyman who doesn't really exist. I don't think that many people have read very articulately or extensively in critical race theory or critical legal theory. It's rather abstruse. It involves a lot of data and statistical analysis. And it's not what it's being represented as by the political public, especially Republicans, and not all Republicans, are using it to kind of frighten people. So let's not do that. Let's not scare people. Let's deal with the facts. And as far as vaccine passports, it's a non-issue. I don't see it even coming up in our political life and our community. Let's, again, let's concentrate on governing and not on politics, please. And thank you for your time. And by the way, I live at 2899 Party Road in Genoa Township. And I want to thank the commission for supporting the excellent crush concrete roads we have out here. And I'd like to see more of them in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallbank. Let's see. Next up is Chuck Wright.
Hi, this is Chuck Wright, 5575 Stowe in Fallerville. I tried to keep an open mind with Steve Williams when I seen this information come out. And I looked over the meeting minutes from the Huron Clinton Metro Park Authority and seen a lot of things that disturbed me. None of them was major, other than the $6 million for the Detroit Riverfront Conservancy. So that kind of surprised me. But, so like I say, I tried to keep an open mind, and the first speaker this afternoon was Mr. Williams. And he failed to tell us any of his successes or why he's qualified to be the appointed person. He spent the whole time talking about how wonderful DEI was and that how we don't know what it's all about. That's not really what the metro parks should be. They should be for recreation. I think I heard somebody say trees, bees, and paths. I don't know that DEI is part of a park system. So I'm concerned about that, the three-quarters of a million dollars that was also approved for DEI. That has no place in the park system. So I believe the entire board should probably be refreshed. I know you don't have the authority to refresh the entire board for the Huron Clinton Metro Park Authority, but I would like you to see, or would like to see, somebody else other than Mr. Williams be appointed to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David with no last name. When you're unmuted, if you give your name and address before you start, that would be great. Go ahead. When you're unmuted, if you give your name and address before you start, that would be great. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Wes. Thanks, board. This is David Deal from Brighton in Livingston County area. My wife and I have lived here for 30 years. We love the Livingston County area and glad to be here. Again, I want to thank the commissioners, the board, Wes, everybody for giving us this opportunity to speak and to hear our comments and our questions. Appreciate what you're doing right now and what you're going to do to return this county, this state, and this country back to the fabric that made us so good for so long. So thank you for that. I had a little bit of a message prepared, but after hearing people like Anna Glenn, the Spikeoffs, Connie and Jo Ellen speak so eloquently, I've learned that I need to be much more prepared next time. So I could pretty much just say I echo everything that those four people, five people said. Thank you, guys, for putting together such a well-prepared argument. So I guess I'll start off by just saying quickly that I've been informed, of course, and more so in this meeting, that the previous Metro Parks Board member voted in favor of some initiatives that I vehemently disagree with, the race-based, woke, social justice, white privilege initiatives that I believe we all should have learned if we had God-fearing, family-loving, American-loving parents shortly after we got done playing in the sandbox. So these are things that are just money waste, and I guess an excuse for maybe doing the wrong things and trying to find some way to mold people in a way that some people think we should be living, when in fact, we should have learned that much, much long time ago, like back in elementary school. So not needed now as adults. If we need it as adults, we have other issues. So I strongly encourage us to, I mean, we get back to the one decision, somebody mentioned something about, let's not base this decision on one vote that somebody did wrong. This is not just one vote. This is a huge issue right now. If you're not paying attention to what's going on, this is everything right now. This is not just one small vote. This is the core fabric of a bunch of people that are trying to ruin our culture, ruin who we are. So I think we need to appoint Tammy Carlon as the next board member. Also, I didn't know anything about vaccine passports. We're even being discussed in Livingston County. I'm shocked that it came up in this meeting. If I vehemently disagree with DEI and other things, I much more so disagree with vaccine passports. So please vote against anything or enact any kind of legislations that's necessary to prevent that from happening in future. Those of us with our eyes wide open know that that is the beginning of an end and an end that none of us want to see. So please, if you don't have your eyes open and see that, open them up soon. I also want to remind us that I've heard it a few times tonight, we are not a democracy, we are a republic. Okay, go look it up. Also, please do not get your vaccine. It is experimental.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sean Greer.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners. Heard a lot of different things tonight on this call. Vaccine passports are 100% real. In our state, colleges are requesting that, hospitals are requesting that. I personally know people that can't go see their family members in the hospital because they don't have vaccine paperwork. So for doctors to come on and speak that it doesn't exist, then what are we talking about? We should do a little bit more research outside of the Main Street media. I'm adamantly against the vaccine passports. I 100% agree that they are experimental. Nobody should get those. There isn't proper data. No kids should, there is no emergency for children. Therefore, there should be no ability for children at all to get these, and that is a crime against our children. We have to educate ourselves before making a blind decision. As adults, we have that ability to make whatever decision we want, ignorant or not. But for our children, they depend on our safety and not out of ignorance. So we have to protect our children and the future of society within those. I 100% support providing and presenting a resolution that we approve in Livingston County to avoid that even being a topic of conversation. DEI and critical race theory, all of the above are all garbage for the mind. You're not going to teach my five- and eight-year-old that they're racist because their skin color is white. That will not happen in a school. That's not going to happen at a metro park. The people that are for that, that I've heard tonight, are wording things in a specific way that make it seem like our parks are not open to every skin color, race, anybody, when they are. That doesn't change any of that. So there doesn't need to, our tax dollars don't need to be invested into political garbage to teach people or children or whoever to be a racist, and that they automatically are based off of the color of their skin and not the content of their character, which we've all heard that. I'm fully in support based off of that decision. I believe people can make one decision that goes against principles and beliefs that get you removed from a public official position. You can have a whole career of doing great things and make a decision that isn't what's best for the community, and you should be removed from your position because of that. And with that said, I believe, and vote for Ms. Carlon to be appointed and to remove the current Steve, as well as if we could do the board as well and have a clean slate and go from there. To say these things aren't political and we shouldn't worry about people's political beliefs when those very much influence the very foundation of the principles that they act on or don't act from. I think it's very critical that we do understand where people are, and for everyone bashing.
You have 10 seconds.
Thank you. Everyone bashing Wes tonight, to think that just because of the chair doesn't have his own personal beliefs and principles that he goes for is ignorant. He's able to speak his own mind as well as take in openly what the county believes.
Your time is up, Mr. Greer.
Thank you for the time.
Next up is Stephanie Lie or Lee.
Stephanie, you should be all set to unmute yourself.
Yeah, why don't, we'll go to Eva. We'll come back to Stephanie. Let's go to Eva Hellman in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Eva Hellman in 630 Brighton Lake Road. I don't come prepared with a lot of a written statement, but I'm going to speak from the heart. I'm going to speak because of the way I live my life and how I was raised to live my life. We didn't have to talk about race. We grew up in a college town. My dad and my mother had every race known to man and people from very, very poor countries, truly people who have been deprived at our dinner table many nights a week for my whole entire life, and I've raised my children the same way. We use the metro parks. I see every race there. I run a business. I have every ethnicity known to man. And it's not because I hired based on somebody telling me I had to hire people of different races. I hire people on the basis of how they do the job and how they fit into my company. And I tell you what, we have a wonderful world-represented company that I'm very proud to say that I'm the owner of. We go to the metro parks. We have company picnics there. Our church has our picnics there. We see people of every color. Why now, all of a sudden, we have to start introducing all of these things? That is the parent's job. It's not the metro parks. The metro parks is to keep the parks beautiful and available and accessible to everybody, and they are. And another thought on this is, we should refresh our board every few years. The appointments should be limited to a certain amount of years. I think that's something that should be considered, that maybe every three or four years, we change. That's how we do it in our church. That way, then you're bringing in new ideas, new people, new avenues, fresh thought. And we don't have to be worrying about things like critical race theory and DEI and the likes. So I actually support Tammy Carlon. And as far as the vaccine passports, this isn't an issue. For those of you who say it's not an issue, wow, that's scary. That's very scary. It's just like if you've read your history on the Nazis, that's what everybody said then. So I thank you for your time. And again, I'm in support of Tammy Carlon. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to Alena.
Hi, my name's Alina, and I'm at 792 Gentry Court in Howell. And I wanted to speak today first of all to thank the commissioners for allowing us to speak. I have a couple of points I wanted to bring up. I'm echoing a lot of the same that the previous speakers have said. But in regards to asking you to adopt a resolution like that of Muskegon County, I believe I had emailed that over to our Board of Commissioners earlier this week. Also, a resolution to ban vaccine passports. There's no need for those. And for those of you who have spoke in saying that they're nowhere near the reality they are, like we've seen happening, like someone mentioned before, at colleges, universities. We can't get into hospitals to visit the dear ones that have passed. It is happening, and we need to stop it. I also support the appointment of Tammy Carlon to our Huron Metro Park Board. I'm against DEI and critical race theory, using our tax dollars for the metro park, which has been financially supporting an ideology that's based on misguided premise that America is a racist country. I'm sorry, but like other people have mentioned, we have a black president. We had a black president for two terms. We have a vice president who is currently of color. So we don't need those type of theories, critical race theory, DEI, anywhere in our life in Livingston County or anywhere of that matter. That DEI, I look through it. It uses hostile phrases such as white privilege. The Metro Parks Board promotes concepts that all Americans with light skin pigmentation is systemically racist. I'm sorry, we don't need that type. Here in Livingston County, we need a board member that represents what our county is about, that is more in tune with our values in Livingston County. So again, I'm just speaking up in support of Tammy Carlon, so she can be a voice for Livingston County. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's try, looks like the last person would be Stephanie Lie. Try Stephanie. Oh, yeah, they're unmuted.
Hi, sorry about that. So my name is Stephanie Krieg of 7732 Partridge田 Drive. And I just want to say evil prevails when good men do nothing, and we're asking you commissioners to do something. From our governor getting her boat out early, her lovely travel trips to Florida, walking with thousands in the protests, lots of payoffs, and now eating in a restaurant. We did everything she asked. You know, we stayed home for two weeks. We canceled our weddings here in Livingston County. We would stop going to our churches. And again, evil prevails when good people do nothing. We have been living here, and we've done everything she's asked, and now we're asking you guys to be with Muskegon and pass the vaccine passports for people to say that they are just an illusion and that it's a conspiracy theorist. I'll have you know that two gyms that I know of have already demanded that people show their vaccine cards in order to attend their gyms. So for people to say this is just a conspiracy theory and it's not going to happen here, well, it is, and we're asking you to do something. Again, evil prevails when good people do nothing, and we're asking you to do something. Next up, in regards to the attack on our race, I guess if you will. I just want to say Wes has been the voice of our community. He took the time to come see our pastor at church. He is defending the voice of Livingston County, and we really appreciate that. As a constitutionalist and a Christian, I'm thankful for what he is doing. He was at our 2A event recently, and so he seems to be in touch with what the people of Livingston County want. And he seems to be one of the main fighters for our rights. So for people to throw them under the bus, they haven't read the first preamble to the Constitution, and they don't know anything about freedom. So I do want to thank Wes for that. And then also, too, I support anyone that he supports because of this. So I do support Tammy Carlon. CRT is a stepping stone towards Marxism, and as someone who supports the freedom of the Constitution, we can't indoctrinate our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another hand up. Actually, I see somebody waving, but let me call on Lori's iPhone first, and then we'll get to Jane now.
Okay, am I allowed to speak right now?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Lori from Brighton, Michigan. I've lived here all my life. I'm 52 years old. I am not going to make you stay on long. I support everything the last few people have said. I am against the vaccine passports. I'm against what they're trying to do for our metro parks. I support Tammy Caroline. And Wes, I totally support you, and I'm very sorry how people have to be, how they speak towards you. I think you're wonderful. I can't even tell you how many people I know, and I, again, lived here all my life, that support you. And Drake, I always say his last name wrong, one of the commissioners up there, D R I C K. He's another good one. The guy who took over Bob Buzat's seat is another good one. And I just want to say thank you for all you have done, and we stand with you, Wes. And I truly believe in what you support, and we have your back. And I wanted to say thank you to them, a couple of commissioners in particular, because the other ones doesn't seem to support us like you guys do, and I hope you listen to all of us. Again, I support Tammy Caroline or Carolyn, and I am totally against what they want to do for the metro park. Money should only support cleaning it, keeping it up, all of that. And again, I wanted to say thank you for all you, what you've done, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Oh, Jane Suarez Forward has been waving at us. So if you give us a moment to unmute you, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jane Suarez Forward, Brighton Township, Livingston County. I wanted to say that, you know, if we didn't have watchdogs like Wes, Dr. Gary, the governor, the governor, the rookie governor would be gone wild. Just, you know, just you can see an example over the weekend of her with that little Groupon party in that restaurant. We need people like him. I guess she's trying to sink her own reelection. So that's one point I wanted to make. Also, a previous speaker said, told us to sit down. And that was inappropriate. I didn't, I didn't, I don't think she knows her audience. She's not the only one with a few degrees. I don't know what the doctor, if that's a PhD or that's a medical doctor, but some of us do have a few university degrees, but we don't sit here and talk about it. Also, it seems like that I'd like to also address the, how the media is going to play this meeting out. How is the media going to report on this? I noticed that when the media plays this back, we have a lot of paragraphs about what Ms. Garcia says. We have a lot of paragraph on what Ms. Dobemeyer says, but we don't have a lot on what the other citizens of our county are saying. So I think the media needs to be a little bit more balanced in their reporting on this meeting. So I did want to point that out. Just be fair about the reporting. That's all I would like to say. And I have been out of the loop for the last month because I do have other things to attend to in my life. But when I saw the word "social justice" come up, and after being dragged through the mud with the vaccine distribution, the unfair vaccine distribution, that raised another red flag. Oh, here we go again. So I thought I'd jump on the call. So I thought I'd jump on the call again. And it's been very enlightening to see we have some of the same players come on again. So I just wanted to say hello. And Wes, just keep doing your job. That's all I have to say. And thank you.
Thank you. We have Megan Weller.
Hello, my name is Megan Weller. I live at sixteen fifty New Gate Lane, Howell, Michigan. That's Heartland Township. I wanted to express my support for the DEI efforts of the metro parks. I'm actually going to read you an excerpt from the Huron Clinton Metro Parks Diversity Equity Equity and Inclusion Plan. As our national population becomes more diverse, members of historically marginalized groups are not turning to parks as they consider recreation choices. As these groups continue to grow, we cannot ignore this trend nor the market share associated with it. Future trends in DEI in parks and recreation for the metro parks. The future is just as important as the present. We must get ahead of our increasing diversity and declining attendance. We must look to new and innovative ways of connecting with our region. Aside from the fact that an increased focus on DEI is just the right thing to do, it's also about the bottom line. That is not from the, the plan. That was my own wording, but the, the bottom line is that this gives the opportunity for new markets. Increasing diversity opens up new customer markets. Shifting demographics in the US are changing buying habits and patterns increasingly towards community of color, Latinos and LGBTQ. In order to reach the expanding diverse markets, organizations need to be able to reflect the communities served and speak their language. Customers and partners look for organizations who look like me, and that often affects their choices. Performance improvements. Diversity in the workforce means having a multitude of different cultures, educational backgrounds, and points of view present. These cultural, educational, and conceptual perspectives provide greater depth and breadth in problem solving and idea generation than in monocultural workplaces. Expanded recruitment. Removing barriers to upward mobility opens up recruitment to a wider, more competitive market of applicants and increases the likelihood of finding candidates with knowledge, skills, and abilities that align with job demands. This also leads to better talent recruitment and retention. Excellence. Inclusivity enables organizations to establish and pursue creative and visionary goals, goals that go well beyond compliance and helps them become organizations of excellence and leaders within their respective fields. Better decisions. Decisions made by a group with diverse backgrounds and perspectives get better results than those made by group, like groups, because the resulting differences leads to a wider range of options and more careful processing of information. So if the fact that DEI is just the right thing to do doesn't impact your decision, hopefully some insight to the bottom line to what this will do for the parks does. I support the appointment of Steve Williams to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another hand up on Zoom. Marie's iPad.
Hello, my name is Marie Anne Bien. I live in Green Oak Township at six three nine seven Meyer Avenue, Brighton, Michigan, four eight one one six. I had to speak up because in order for evil to prevail, good men do nothing. And I have been listening to all this. There's many good people who have spoken out. Thank you, Wes, for all you've done. I've known you for years and I so appreciate everything you've done for our community. I'm appalled that six million dollars would be spent on foolish things when the money should really go for the park employees and keeping it up, the sand, the water. I do support all the good people on the county commission from Wes to Jake Gross, Brenda Plank, Mitch. And I, I support Tammy Carlon. It's time to get new blood in that office. So God bless America and God bless all of you, all that you're doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more Zoom hands. I'm going to scroll through the pictures and see if anybody's waving. And I don't see anybody waving. So I'm going to go ahead and close the first call to public with a reminder that there's a second one later in the, in the evening. So moving on in the agenda, item number, let's see, item number seven is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, minutes dated May tenth and May nineteenth. I'm looking for a approval of both sets of minutes. Support Zajak. Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Zajak. Any questions, deletions, additions to the minutes? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
And Commissioner Griffith is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight is tabled items from previous meetings. We have no tabled items. So we'll move on to item number nine, which is approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move the agenda, Helserman.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Plank. Questions on the agenda?
Chair, please.
Commissioner Dric.
I'd ask that the resolution under eleven B numbered two oh two one oh five oh seven six be taken off consent and put down on resolutions for consideration.
Okay, go ahead and do that. Just a reminder to all commissioners, any commissioner without requiring a second can move, ask to move an item from the consent agenda to resolutions for consideration. So while we are on that topic, I will also mention that resolution twenty twenty one dash oh five dash oh seventy seven. I am going to request that to be moved down to the resolutions for consideration. So with those changes, any, anything else on the agenda? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader. And Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number ten, reports this evening. We have a report from the Livingston County Economic Development, Marsha Gabarovski.
Few slides, so I believe they'll be bringing them up. I really appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on behalf of the Economic Development Council of Livingston County. So by way of introduction, my name is Marsha Gabarovski. I'm the Director of Business Development here in Livingston County. I work for Ann Arbor Spark. We are contract staff to the EDC LC. And you can go on to the next slide. The Economic Development Council is a nonprofit here in Livingston County. They were formed in nineteen eighty four. Currently, the board comprises of twenty five members, fourteen from the public sector, as well as eleven private sector partners. The EDC this year adopted a three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollar budget. And that is, that is for their operations. In twenty twelve, so up until twenty twelve, the EDC ran as an organization with a full-time executive director and staff. Upon his retirement, Fred Dillingham, longtime director for the EDC. The board looked to a more regional approach. At the time, Governor Snyder was creating these prosperity regions in which Livingston was part of Prosperity Region Nine, that included Washtenaw, Lenaway, Hillsdale, Jackson, Monroe Counties. And they took upon an opportunity to bring the, the expertise and the business development efforts that Ann Arbor Spark does in Washtenaw County and create a team here in Livingston County. And that has been a successful contractual relationship since twenty twelve. In twenty twenty, the EDC just renewed another three-year agreement with Ann Arbor Spark to continue to provide those economic development services here in Livingston County. I am in my fourth year tenure here as the Director for Business Development. And I am proud to say I do live in Genoa Township, lifelong resident. Next slide. So I wanted the opportunity, I know you get our quarterly reports, and I'm certainly able to provide a lot more information on the day-to-day activities and some of the initiatives that I have worked on here in Livingston County with our businesses. But certainly wanted to start with a little picture of what we have done in twenty twenty in response to the pandemic. We had a unique opportunity to collaborate. The Regional Economic Development Organization, Spark included, to receive funding from the state of Michigan in the form of relief grants for our hardest-hit small businesses due to the pandemic and subsequent closures. As a result, Livingston County was allocated among all other eighty-two counties proportionate funds based on population, and we are responsible for distributing those. So in twenty twenty, we distributed over three point two million dollars to over three hundred and thirty-eight businesses in three rounds of grants. And in the last two rounds, I can say those local review committees made decisions and we had funds distributed to small businesses almost within just a couple of weeks. So we were very proud of the expeditious way that we had been able to work through those. Other things that I had done, we looked to collaborate, working with our partners at the Chambers of Commerce, Convention and Visitors Bureau, again, working with other organizations here in the county that represent those small businesses and those hardest-impacted industries. We put together those virtual events. We put together information sessions. People had questions upon questions. They were frustrated. And we got as many subject matter experts through virtual events as we could to help answer questions of small businesses throughout twenty twenty. Given, in using the immense background in the marketing team that I have access to at Spark, we were able to put a lot of content out there, listing of microloans, listing of alternative resources. We had far fewer grant funds to expend to support small businesses. Where else could our businesses go? What other referrals could we provide them? We were able to all put that on content and keep it on Spark's website. Ann Arbor Spark created an engagement hub where any business in the region can go and listen to recorded webinars, get the latest of my OSHA and other state back-to-work plans. So we had like a one-stop shop for our small businesses. And then certainly at a hyper-local level, because we don't have a lot of foundations in Livingston County or access to just a few regional foundations, we felt it was important, both myself and our Chambers of Commerce, to work out putting our own business assistance fund together. And at a grassroots effort, through sale of really cool Love Live Co. T-shirts, as well as some other foundational and private sector support, we were able to raise seventeen thousand dollars to provide local businesses in Livingston County, in addition to the state funds that we had received. So that's just a quick snapshot of what twenty twenty looked like as we pivoted from working with our larger businesses into our smaller businesses.
Could I have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Hey, you said seventeen thousand dollars you were able to raise locally. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you tell me basically that comes from industry, private citizens, or could you just, don't tell me exactly where, but?
We had received a few corporate donations, but we also had proceeds from sale of some T-shirts that we worked on the Love Live Co. through our Convention and Visitors Bureau. So it was a combination of we sold T-shirts. We literally sold T-shirts.
Good. We like it when you bring in money from other sources. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go, go ahead, Ms. Gabarovski.
So next slide, please. The core work that I do in Livingston is, again, working with our businesses, maintaining those relationships with our large employers, primarily that serve other businesses as their customers. You can see that the map shows every business in the last five years where we have had one of those retention visits or we have that relationship with, and we do work to reach out to on a, at least an annual basis. Today, in twenty twenty one, I've made thirty-three visits, and that's where we're sitting down. We're getting to know what are the hurdles of these companies? What do they need? What are their frustrations? What resources are we able to provide? What can we recommend and advocate on behalf of these businesses? And so that's through these meetings, we're able to provide referrals. And so we've got a total of thirty-four referrals so far this year. And that could be meeting Michigan Works for the first time and having access to training grants. It could be the University of Michigan's Tech Transfer Center because a company might have an R and D project where they want to work with a professor and students at the university and have access to federal grants. So it runs the gamut, and that's what we try to continue to stay up on. So we can be that referral and resource on an on-in-demand basis. We never know what those businesses are going to need. So we try to stay up to it. In addition to retaining and supporting our existing businesses, we do have industrial property that is ready for attraction of new businesses. So we do work in our project pipeline of the twenty-one existing projects or active projects. About half of them are just, we submitted a site in Livingston County because someone's interested in our region. And let's see if we could, you know, get eyes in Livingston County. If we have interest in these growth or attraction projects, we're able to help kind of bird dog and assist in project management, help make those key introductions, whether that's to our local governments or other industries in the county. That's what we're able to do through those relationships, as well as provide those talent services. Because that's certainly not unique here in Livingston County. So yeah, currently we have about twenty-one active projects in our pipeline. And that's a business looking in Livingston County, or that's an existing business that is looking to grow in Livingston County. Next slide. I wanted to touch also on something that was a first to provide here in Livingston County. And that was a three-year economic outlook report done by the Economic and Labor Team at the University of Michigan. This idea came to me last year. A few nonprofits had come to me with some data from other reports that this team at the University of Michigan has done for the state of Michigan. And they said, we need this data for Livingston County. And I said, we don't have that data because we haven't had a report done and we have to commission it. And so I did think that it was good time to have this data and this information available and to see by the number, what does Livingston's economic forecast look like? What, where have we gone? Have we been? And where are we going? So we had a few key takeaways that, to the participants at our virtual presentation back in April. I think we had about ninety tune in. That fifty-six percent of working residents in the county commuted outside of the county. Livingston has the highest median value of owner-occupied units at about two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And then pre-pandemic, our Livingston's economy outperformed the state. But the average wages in Livingston County are much lower than the statewide average. So we had a, an interesting revelation and it was just, it was, it was a good, good session. We've got good data. We're able to look at this data in a way that says, how can we attract a new set of industry? How can we look at supporting businesses that are really going to help promote and continue to make Livingston grow? That's the conclusion of my update to you guys this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. And as always, it's such a pleasure. Thanks.
Thanks for joining us this evening, Ms. Gabarovski. Questions or comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you. Just for my colleagues, I had an opportunity to speak with Marsha at the end of March. It was a really informative discussion. I would encourage my colleagues to spend some time and do the same. She's got some really interesting, good ideas. And I think that looking at these stats, the key takeaways, there's opportunity. Certainly, we're doing a nice job in some areas, but opportunity in other areas, and I think that we can support. So I appreciate your hard work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Plank.
My question is, is does this just include for-profit businesses? It's definitely not nonprofit that some of this money comes to, the grants.
Which money? The grants?
Yes.
So nonprofits were eligible for the grants?
They were.
Yes.
Interesting. Thank you.
No, nonprofits were eligible for, for those state grants as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gross.
Mr. President, I'd speak.
In calling the report together, you have been able to tabulate how many Livingston County small businesses folded as a result of the pandemic?
We have not received, we don't have a data set that could indicate the amount of businesses that had folded. I'm sure that's something we can, you know, continue to look into. I know anecdotally that the small number of businesses that had shut their doors and we know are not coming back as a result of the pandemic. So.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you. Marsha, thank you for being here. And I see Phil Santor is here with you as well. Hello, Phil. Thank you. I just want to say a great report considering what the last year brought us and that these visits, did you, were these in-person visits?
No. These were virtual and our manufacturers mainly took a two week hiatus before they were full back up and running. However, we did take the precautions to keep virtual. I like to include other participants in these, these visits when I schedule them. And my friends at the state of Michigan are still virtual. So.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say, as a small business owner and I belong to the Chamber of Commerce in the area and Spark and Economic Development Corporate Corp really keep the chambers up to date as to what is happening. So the, no, so we know what the resources are out there. And I appreciate that for, on behalf of all the small businesses in Livingston County. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I will take Phil Sanders, our Senior Vice President of Business Development and Ann Arbor Sparks. So.
Anybody, any other commissioners with questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Commissioner Helserman.
There's always been a bus transportation. From what I can see, most of it comes from the Flint area. Are, please address that. Do we get any people coming from Washtenaw or Ingham County area? Could you address how that's going and are we finding enough workers from those sources?
There has been a regional transit route between the Metro Transit Authority in Genesee County into Livingston County, actually since nineteen ninety-seven. It was expanded in 2012 to include more routes in Brighton, but also into Howell. So currently there are well over fourteen hundred workers that utilize those buses. Those buses do run twenty-four seven. So no, we are not getting any regional routes from other, from other counties, other regional transit authorities. The MTA used funds, federal dollars back in the nineties to create those regional routes. And they've stuck and we've been thankful to actually to see them have the ability to grow. But no, we haven't, we don't get those regional routes from other counties.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your work. We had an in-person meeting. Had a restaurant with my wife and thank you that you're bold enough to do that. So.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Gebrowski. Appreciate you joining us this evening.
Have a great evening. And my number and email are available. Happy to meet anytime.
Next up is approval of the consent agenda. Just a reminder, there's only two items on the consent agenda. Twenty twenty-one dash oh five dash zero seven five and twenty twenty-one dash oh five dash zero seven eight. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Lawrence.
Support Zajak.
Motion by Commissioner Lawrence, support by Commissioner Zajak. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. Commissioner Gross. And Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is resolutions for consideration. So we'll take them in numerical order. The first one is the twenty twenty-one dash oh five dash zero seven six. That was on the consent agenda. That is the resolution authorizing Livingston County Veteran Services Build Out Project. Looking for a motion.
Move the, the resolution.
Support Lawrence.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Lawrence. Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Dric.
Co-commissioners, I'd like you to understand that I failed in my duty last time to ask these questions. It went right over my head. I should have asked him then. I see that there's a line item for appliances. And I was trying to understand what appliances would an office need to spend fifty-three hundred bucks to buy? So I called Barry Durst and she told me, well, we're going to get a microwave for X dollars. And we're going to get a refrigerator for the employee's lounge for X dollars. And they're very reasonable and low priced. And then she said she wanted to spend the rest of the money somewhere in the neighborhood of over three thousand dollars to get a washer dryer, because every so often they have some towels to wash. And every so often a guy or lady comes in and needs their laundry done. I get it. But I think that that's a luxury washer dryer for over three thousand dollars. I did some research on, at Lowe's and there are combo units, meaning the washer and the dryer is in the same box for twelve hundred, sixteen hundred, lot less money. And I invited Ms. Durst, Mrs. Durst to be here tonight. And I invited her to perhaps bring some lower priced options, if she would care to do that. So if she's in the audience, I'd like to, I'd like to listen.
I'm here via Zoom.
Go ahead, Ms. Durst.
Yes, I wasn't able to send off the email earlier. So you ended up getting it right around five, a little bit after, and I apologize. It was just a busy day today. As I, I'm just going to basically recap what I said in the email. If you guys have any questions, please feel free to reach out or to, to ask in here. The washer dryer combo is all, is actually a washer dryer combo in one in its ventless dryer. So it'll wash it and then it'll automatically go into the drying cycle. It doesn't require any kind of external duct work, which would have been quite an extra cost where we're at. So that alone offsets the cost. It is just the size of a small dryer. So it takes up a lot less room and it, less square footage. And then lastly, I wanted to get something cheaper. However, that was the only washer dryer combo ventless that I could get on a tight time crunch that we were trying to get it for a grant. Now, there was a hiccup in, you know, having it delivered. They, they said it was going to be delivered before the end of April and it ended up coming the first week of May. So it, it didn't quite make the grant. However, it's already at the office and the architects have already taken the dimensions and use that to build their millwork around it. At this point, it would, I feel, be a moot point to go ahead and restock that onto the truck and take it away only to get one that requires a vent. And then at that point, we're just going to have to go back to the general contractor and have them put in vents and rework that whole contract. And as far as it being a luxury, I respectfully disagree that it is a luxury. It is not a luxury to have clean clothing. And so that was a little disappointing to hear, especially for veterans who are struggling to, they don't have a vehicle. We do not offer transportation to the, to the laundromat. We do offer transportation to our office. And only that is, it's an excuse for veterans to come in and be around other veterans. That wash is going to take an hour and a half. That gives them an hour and a half to be exposed to what we have to offer, to accidentally run into a veteran that may or may not be just like them who are having the same struggles. It's another excuse for them to get together and be able to work on things at their own pace, at their own time, or if they just choose to disengage for a bit until they're ready. I feel all too often veterans are shoved into a meeting saying, okay, you're all like, go at it for the next hour. That's not, we're, we're people. We're all different and we don't like to be shoved into a box and say, there, you're all the same, you know, figure something out. It allows people to be individuals and it allows people to have their needs met with clean clothes and to help meet the needs of a social and emotional needs they may have and to build that community. So I do not think it's a luxury.
Ma'am, what was the deadline that you were up against? What was the date?
Yep, it was April thirtieth. It had to be delivered and invoice paid by April thirtieth. And we put it on the P card and it was supposed to be in, and it said it was coming in. And then the day of, it said that it was diverted and that they would give us a callback for another drop off time the following week. And what I plan on doing is we have, we've saved quite a bit of money with the twenty twenty-one grand for, excuse me, the way I went about getting our, our customer, customer service software, we're saving a lot of money there. And I just plan on requesting to have some of that money that we saved there to pay for the washer dryer combo. And then in addition to that, there was some items in NBS Commercial Interiors that were expensive that I was able to swap out and go for a cheaper substitution. So we've saved money there as well.
So it never got, the grant money never got used that you were hoping to use?
Correct. So this is another, probably a side subject, but it was allocated for IT and the IT quote was much higher and we encumbered a lot more money than they needed. And by the time we found out that they didn't need all that money, we couldn't unencumber it and reallocate it to something else. So we didn't have the ability in Dexteria to move that money as quickly as we needed to. I was basically at that point trying to use up what funds we could get. Basically it had to be paid for and brought in before April thirtieth. So I was thinking about all the things that we needed that I could possibly get on the P card that we could put against the grant. Otherwise, if we didn't use the money, we were going to lose it. And the same thing goes with the twenty twenty-one grant. There's some money that we're not using. I've got to reallocate it and if I don't, lose it.
On an average week, how many people come in and want their laundry done?
Nobody, because we don't offer that.
Do other vet services in other counties have any kind of laundry service?
Nope. The vet services in other counties, you, most of them consist of a part-time person working out of like a mop closet. We're trying to, we're trying to be the ones that we, we show that veterans can have more than just a mop closet. We're trying to show that we can have and we treat our veterans with more respect, more dignity than we would treat, you know, an average person that walks in. So I guess my question is, if a veteran needs it and it's helpful, I don't understand why a half a million dollar project gets stopped because of this.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yield.
Go ahead, Commissioner Helserman.
Mary, thank you for showing up tonight. In my mind, this is the advantage of having a female director. Because she thinks of these things. You know, if I were making this, this probably would be the last thing that would come to my mind. But for people that are homeless or, you know, how many veterans don't have this, to me, to me, this is a cutting edge sort of thing. I think that, you know, if, if, if we're the only veterans service with the ability to do somebody's wash, I would wonder why we are the only one. That's, that's how I would approach it. I, I think that this is, I'm favorable for the project as it is. So.
Anything, any further discussion questions? We do have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
I've heard good reasons. Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader. And Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh five dash zero seven seven. It's a resolution authorizing the modification of a part-time administrative aid position in the Family Support Division to a full-time administrative aid position. Is there a motion?
So moved, Helserman.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Reader. Yeah, I'll, well, I'll kick off the discussion because I was the one who asked it to be removed from the consent agenda. So if you would just bear with me just for a second, I'm going to switch screens on my computer so I can see my question. So I, I've got, you know, information from Mr. Gutenberg, which I appreciate, you know, in terms of the number of cases. And then I also did some more inquiry into headcount at the prosecutor's office. And it led, it leads me to ask a couple of questions and that's why I asked it to be removed off the consent agenda. So the, what's in, in front of the commissioners right now is, is a plan to, you know, boost the hours of the administrative aid to thirty hours. My question for Mr. Gutenberg or Mr. Reader is what other alternatives were considered other than the, the one that's being proposed? Did, were other things, were, were other options considered and discarded?
Well, Eric Gutenberg here. Thank you for having me. Naturally, I will defer to Prosecutor Reader to supplement anything that he believes also should be mentioned. What I can say is when I came into this position, I became, I was informed that there had always been at least two and a half full-time staff in this division, in this department. And it's immediately evident why we need that third person. As you indicated, you referred to boosting the hours. We are talking, the proposal is to go from twenty hours to thirty hours based on need. It's an essential position. The work is there. Frankly, we are still processing twenty twenty cases. So what I can tell you is the efforts that I was involved in, in trying to fill this position. We posted it more than once. We, for at least two weeks per posting period. I believe January and March were the posting dates. We interviewed what appeared to be qualified candidates, at least for consideration of the position. Many of the candidates were kind of surprised to learn the breadth of the job. Because the position, as I've described at the previous subcommittee meetings, involves really a combination of skills, paralegal, almost, almost a victim advocate, because it's not technically a victim advocate, but because of the issues that are addressed during the interviews with the clients, issues of domestic violence, child abuse, et cetera. More conventional receptionist or administrative aid responsibilities as well. So I can tell you that in interviewing these individuals, those who were on the, on the surface qualified and when we tried to, or offered the position between the hours, the, the part-time work and the, the responsibilities that were a part of this, those candidates withdrew. Some shared with us the fact that full-time hours and/or benefits and/or frankly, fewer responsibilities in combination with higher pay were available elsewhere. So I can tell you that that's what we did. I can also indicate that our division is because we're a four D department, the, the services or the costs for employees associated. The services or the um the costs for employees um associated um costs and expenses are. The the best way I can explain is a separate division from the rest of the prosecutor's office, and again, I won't um presume to speak for prosecutor Reader. Um, but um. That, um that in part explains why we were seeking. For someone who was specifically eligible for this office and not um serving in any other capacity.
Wes, if I may.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
What we're talking about, um I made this a campaign issue when I ran to be the prosecutor. The fact that this uh office um. Was virtually shut down. For an extended period of time during uh twenty twenty, and I think that's reflected. In the numbers that you see that were provided to you by uh Eric. So we're not only dealing with the twenty twenty one cases that are coming in. But the twenty twenty cases that were deferred by the prior administration as well. What we're talking about with this office is being able to collect uh money to reimburse the state. For uh dead Pete, deadbeat parents who aren't otherwise going to uh pay their child support. Though, I call, all I can tell you is the work is there. It's a good work, it provides money back to the state. For the tax dollars that we have expended to support uh children of otherwise uh deadbeat parents who are not uh paying their fair share. And uh. We have had extreme difficulty. Uh this. Position uh became available in October. The prior administration did not even post the the position. We posted immediately upon uh my becoming the prosecutor in the office. We've gone through two postings. These postings, uh each posting takes in excess of a month, six weeks to go through the process. Uh with each posting, the position was offered to somebody. And uh. They withdrew. They absolutely uh withdrew. We're talking about the uh lowest step person that you can possibly hire with these positions. Um, I think the your Ann Arbor Spark people talked earlier about the fact that we are. In essence, a low-paying uh county. Um, you know what the circumstances are right now with people that are receiving unemployment and their bonuses not to work. And uh. It's a position that I need filled. I need to have somebody in the, in the office to be able to collect money from deadbeat. Parents who aren't paying their fair share. And I'm asking you to uh. Uh, support. What we're asking for.
Yeah, I'm not saying I I don't support, I I just wanted some background, so I, um, a couple of follow-up questions, so. Um, the uh, has there been? Consideration to reorganizing the. I'll say the administrative support, there's um. Uh, there's eleven people that I count that, that, obviously, they don't all all report up to Mr. Gutenberg, but there's eleven. Uh either office managers or administrative aides, and one of them is a twenty-eight hour person. Um, you know, I've, so um I apologize if I ask these questions, it's just the way that I'm wired when I. The um, so you've got a twenty-eight hour person, could you not combine that to make a forty-hour person? Uh, could you run people overtime, you know, uh and and with the cross-training of of personnel? Those are some of the things that went through my mind and would appreciate your thoughts on that.
Yeah, these are two separate divisions of the prosecutor's office, the. Um, the Family Support Division. It's um an autonomous, it's an autonomous unit for the prosecutor's uh office. The um. Work that's been performed in the, what I would call the criminal side of the office. Uh, were stretches there as well. Uh I had a meeting earlier on. With Commissioners A Jack and with the Luke. County Administrator Nate Bird. Regarding the challenges that we're facing due to the overwhelming amount of of video. Technology that we're receiving and demands that are being made uh for uh. By defendants justifiably. For productions of video evidence and the amount of time that's taking, it's taking for staff. And uh. Quite frankly, what I indicated Wes to. To Commissioners A Jack and to uh. Administrator Bird at that time was you might expect that we would be requesting. Additional staff support for the General Criminal Division. For the amount of video that's being requested and processed uh through the prosecutor's office. Um, I can tell you that there. There is not uh. Other staff. That would be able to assist in the Family Support Division. They're, they're two completely different. Uh types of work. Uh the, one of the things that. Eric Gutenberg talked to me about. And he's a twenty-five-year-plus prosecutor that came to us uh from Washington County. Was uh the fact that he was now, oh. Working not so much as a defense attorney, but as a plaintiff attorney in trying to collect uh child support. They're, they're completely different. Functions that the prosecutors, prosecutor's office fulfills. In um some counties, the, the Family Support Division has been combined with the friend of the court. If we don't adequately function in this Family Support Division. We jeopardize the two-thirds funding that we receive for the prosecutor's office. As well as the friend of the court office. If we're audited and not providing the services. In uh an administratively. Functional capacity. We risk that two-thirds funding. I mean, that's what we're talking about.
Uh, thank you, I just, one last comment and then I'm 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 done and if uh see if there's any other um commissioners, but. I was made aware, you know, I was drilling into the finances of a decision to go to thirty hours, just uh information for my colleagues and I'll um. Yield the floor. Um. The uh retirement, the MERS retirement benefit is um provided to employees when they get to twenty-one hours. Then at twenty-nine hours, um the health insurance kicks in, so. And I just wanted to share that uh I I wasn't. Um, aware of that until discussions today, but I I I'll yield the floor and ask if any other commissioners have questions or comments.
If, if I may, Wes, um that is built into the numbers that we've provided. To the board for the resolution. For the nine thousand dollars.
Questions, comments from anybody else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Houserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners A Jack.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader. And Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, resolution uh twenty twenty one. Oh, sorry, sorry. Um, you, uh, no, thank you for joining us this evening, appreciate it. Uh, resolution uh twenty twenty one dash. Oh five dash oh seven nine, it's a resolution authorizing Livingston County's annual budget process and calendar. Is there a motion?
So moved, Lawrence.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lawrence, support by Commissioner Gross, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Houserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners A Jack.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. Commissioner Gross. And Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty one dash oh five dash oh eight oh is a resolution approving an appointment to the Huron Clinton Metropolitan Authority.
Uh, move the resolution, Houserman.
Uh, motion by um Commissioner Houserman, support by Commissioner Reader. Um. Discussion.
Uh, I will open this up. Uh, this uh. I'm the one that uh made the decision to uh not open it up to uh a process. Uh, which uh is uh always a possibility in this case. Uh, in my mind, we have uh at least three highly qualified people. Uh, so far as I know, I've talked extensively with Steve, I've talked uh enough with uh. First name, uh Tammy, is it Tammy Carlon, uh enough to uh get a measure of her personality and her. Uh, her abilities. Uh, and uh the other one was uh Tom Gen- Genak.
Genago.
Genago, uh which uh in my conversation with uh Jay uh Gross, he had high praise for him. Uh. And uh. I, in my mind, uh, the, the. The benefit of the doubt should go to the incumbent. Uh, and I explained before in finance that because. The nature of our, we we don't have a ballot with three names on it. And and the one with the, the two with the uh. Uh, most votes go forward and it, we only can vote at one person at a time. And for that reason, uh. I uh chose to bring Steve Williams' name forward. Uh, in my uh discussion with Steve Williams. Uh, before I knew about the six million dollars. Uh, that that was an issue, Steve Williams brought that up himself and discussed. Uh, how he was not exactly favorable to that, to that, uh but uh. You know, for the Riverfront Conservancy. Um, but I, from what I understand, he didn't vote against it, though I don't think he was favorable to it uh per se. Uh, uh, with the other, with regards to uh the D E I. Um, I know that uh. I know Steve Williams enough to know that he is not in any way, shape or form. For the divisive nature. That branded D E I brings. Uh, in fact, he voted against uh bringing Heather McGee as a speaker. Uh I have read her book. Uh, uh, and I I think. It's a, is, if I got it from the Howell Library, anybody can get it. I think it's a book that, that uh every white person that. Cares to see the other side of the matter. Uh, I would recommend it to read. However. I disagreed with almost everything that the book had to say. I didn't agree with that. But I think, and and in our discussion. Everybody in the discussion says everybody in Livingston County should have equal opportunity. The Democrats said that, the Republicans said that. Why can't we come together and say? That's what we're for, we're all for that. But some people don't understand that when you put. Diversity, equity and inclusion in the same sentence. It takes on a life of its own. And uh. Uh, I have no, no qualms that Steve uh anyway. Uh, is for the divisiveness of of D E I. And so, uh I I've full, I I hun, you know, I. I think that all of the people that have been under consideration would be great. I. I know Steve, we've, we've talked about it this extensively. Uh, and I, he has my full confidence uh in this. Uh, though he may have made a vote here or a vote there. Uh, there's a scripture that says you should not strike a prince for his equity. When. Somebody makes a decision. At that particular point in time. And everybody looking at it doesn't understand the situation that goes around it. There are gonna be decisions that look bad from the outside. But have been well-intentioned from the inside at the time. And that's how I picture Steve. I, this is, in my think app says. There's not too many error arrows straighter than Steve Williams. Okay? There's not very many conservative people that can squeeze on the right side of Steve. If there's such a thing as right and left in the political world. So. As much as has been said. Uh, I fully. I fully support him. And I think uh as far as new blood, well, Steve is pretty new blood, he's been there two years, is that how long you've been there, Steve? Five years? Is that how long you've been on? Okay, I thought you were only uh after uh. You uh left here. Were were you a concurrent uh commissioner and on that board?
For about four months.
Okay.
Jack passed away in July.
Okay, thank you, if that's okay for me to have a conversation with the chair. Uh anyways, uh. Um, this position has always. You, in the history that I know, uh, the mayor of Howell was in this position. Uh, Jack LaBelle. A a well-known person in the county was in this position. Uh, Steve Williams is a long-term member of our community. Uh, he's well-known. Uh, and those things. Don't detract from the other people. But they. Speak well. Yeah, what is the advantage of keeping Steve? To me, that is of the advantage that we have. Uh, and so I'm. I I, I think if we do not. Appoint him. People will say, I think wrongly, but people will have more room to say. That we. Are like the Democrats in that we will only. Put people into office that are in lockstep with us. We, that's not what a Republican is. Uh, we don't want Steve uh calling us or or Tammy or or Tom calling us and say, how should I vote on this? We don't want them calling the Republican chair and saying, how should I vote on this? We don't want that, that's not what we are. We want people that have the values. And will vote the values and will stand up for the values. In my mind, that's Steve Williams. Uh, I know a lot of people won't agree with me. Uh, and I. I say nothing against the other people, I only say, you know, Steve is well worth our consideration. I yield the floor, thank you.
Thank you, um Commissioner Houserman. Any other commissioners um that want to um? Comment on the issue?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Uh, Commissioners A Jack.
Thank you. Uh. Yeah, we went through this uh discussion in the Personnel Committee and I voiced the same concerns, not as it relates to either candidate, frankly, as it relates to the process that we followed. To get here, we are once again at an appointment, we're once again using a different process, we're once again. Um, having a discussion about the faulty um approach to that process. Um, in the Personnel Committee meeting, this for my colleagues, for those uh who were not able to attend, I voted no on this resolution. Um, and it was based, my vote for no was based entirely on a process issue. Uh, I do appreciate the chair putting as a discussion item a proposed uh appointment process, and so we'll get into that later. And so we'll get into that later in our meeting today. But what we are faced with, I believe, is an opportunity to right the wrong of the process of which we followed in order to get here. And we, we see two quality candidates in the room today with the opportunity to ask questions. So I'm, I'm going to begin that process. And if I don't make it through, then, then we'll address it at the time. But I would, I would ask Mr. Williams, if you could step up to the, to the microphone, just so that you're able to answer some questions for me. If the chair would allow that.
You know, I would prefer to have a discussion amongst the commissioners first. If there are questions for either candidate, because we can entertain them. I, I want a, a fully informed vote. But I would prefer to hear from the commissioners first.
Okay, I will, I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Mr. Williams, have you get up and sit down again? I'll just pose my questions then to the commissioners that I have, both for, well, either candidate. We, we talked about several issues today, one of them being the $6 million spent with a private entity. I have interest and concern with the purpose, the oversight, the follow-up, whether it be an audit or any other kind of tool used for oversight purposes. Another issue we've discussed and, and I have quite a bit of interest in is the DEI issue. Specifically as to, I know there was one vote that the current representative voted in favor of DEI. And there was another vote voted opposed to DEI with regard to the speaker. I have questions and interest in why the initial approval, why the sub, the secondary disapproval. I have interest in understanding what the purpose of the Detroit entity is or the Detroit relationship is with respect to DEI. I have interest in the, the vote that was taken on the letter that addresses the importance of DEI as, as crafted by an individual representing the board and then the vote to have that board letter sent on to others. And then the other big issue that I have questions about is the budget. We have, as we've heard, upwards of $2 million being spent in taxpayer dollars from Livingston County. We have a budget, I think crisis is a fair assessment of the Metro Parks budget. There, there are many issues. I know some, some work has been done to improve that, which I appreciate, but I know there are still ongoing issues. So I have several questions as it relates to the budget with regard to the Metro Parks. At this point, I suppose I'll yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other commissioners with comments or?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Reader.
I guess my concern is more basic than what we've been talking about. I feel that politics doesn't have a place in public service. And I think that we are trying to micromanage a department. There are concerns that are here addressed by commissioners that really belong in that forum, not before the Board of Commissioners. We're here to do governance and we're not here to do politics. So I don't even think this should be brought up. It has been a big issue now, which I think is inappropriate for our board. I very much support what Steve Williams stands for and his performance and his experience. I think if we have issues with DEI or any other program, it needs to be addressed in that forum and not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the issue? Commissioner Plank.
First of all, I just want to apologize, that was my alarm going off to tell my husband he has to take his cholesterol medicine. Today, I was watching a video for leadership management for my company. And it was a series of videos talking about hiring and other issues that leaders in our company have to address day to day. The video that I thought was ironic that I saw today was talking about the hiring practices. And the, the speaker, the person doing the video was talking about how there are only two things that we should look at whenever we're bringing someone on to come and join our company. And, and I'm sort of relating that to this very meeting, actually. It said that, that the person that we hire needs to live by our values, which are hungry, humble and smart. And that there's more to that. And I'm sure that the, those words alone probably are enough to have you understand that our values and our company. And, and that we want people to, to, to be a part of that culture that we strive so hard to promote within our company. So that was the first thing, hungry, humble and smart. The second thing was that you need to ask the question, can the person do the job that you're asking them to do? Do they have the capability to perform the work that you are asking them to do? And those are the only two questions you should ever ask in an interview or, or consider when interviewing people for a job. So in thinking about that, you know, at, at the end, of course, it has the Q and A and it tries to trip you up with questions and answers. And it, it was a multiple choice. And one of the, the wrong answers was is the person is like you, so you like them because they went to the same college as you or that they like the same football team as you or that they live in the same area. So there are a lot of things that you don't take into consideration, things you don't ask in an interview. And so in listening to everything that was going on today, I'm, I'm applying that to this situation. I do understand that both candidates, after taking a look at their credentials and what they've done. And I think both Tammy and Steve are great candidates for this. I think we're very blessed in Livingston County that we have two people for the job. And, you know, obviously there's going to be someone who gets the position and someone who doesn't. And so I think for me, you know, I have to, I'm, I'm going to apply what I basically learned today to this. And, and so when I think about the hungry, humble, smart, I think both of them have the smarts, obviously. And the humble, I, I don't think I know them well enough to even apply that piece. But, but the hungry, obviously coming forward and wanting this position and having to endure some of the comments that were called the public. And, you know, it's, it's tough. It's tough for the people on this board to make decisions, especially when you have two really good viable candidates. And so for me, I'm just going to revert back to what I learned today and say, you know, who do I think is going to be best for that job? And, and do they have the hungry, humble, smart values that I would apply to, to the candidates? So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Any, anybody else? I'm going to chime in with my perspectives. Going last on this first round of discussion. The, I want to make it clear to everybody, both here and on Zoom, that I was fully ready to endorse and vote for the, the incumbent. That my mind was changed after I did some research. And that research was prompted when the Director of the Metro Parks came and gave their annual report. I want to, as typical, I do my homework so I can ask more intelligent questions after the, after a presentation. It was then I found out about this, what, what I'm going to refer to as this toxic racist ideology being propagated by Metro Parks. And it is very troubling to me to, to see that. It troubles me to see it in other aspects of society. It troubles me to see it in the schools. And anyway, I moved on from there to look at the votes and read the minutes back from 2019, all the sets of minutes through 2020. And I was troubled with the votes of the incumbent. The, the most egregious one was the $6 million expenditure given, giving money to the Detroit Riverfront Conservancy, a private entity. And then if, if, if you did as I did, if you took the time to read the minutes, you would clearly see that that was presented by the Director of the Metro Parks as something to do more, that we have to do more for, quote, "social justice." So that is troubling to me. It has no place in recreation, pushing an ide- an ideology that in, in, in other, in other venues, you, you've seen a big turnoff in, in pro-sports when the ideology is pushed upon its customers. Take example of the NBA or the NFL or the Academy Awards where the ratings are dropping. People don't want that in their recreation and entertainment. And I think that's clear, clearer tonight. If you listen to the numbers of people that came out and spoke to call the public, if you, over the past few days, if you look at the numbers of emails that people sent in, this is an issue that is of great importance to people. It is not something that's a minor issue. People are, are concerned for our country, the racial divisions that this type of programming promotes. And it is within the purview of this board to select representatives that share the values of this board, that help implement the policy decisions, you know, the policy preferences that we have as a board. And I think that, well, I am convinced that those, the, the better candidate is Tammy Carlon. So I, I, with that being said, I will ask if there's any follow-up questions or comments from commissioners. Hearing none. If, if you want to take the questions, the, Mr. Williams, and then I, same as Carlon, if, if you want to chime in later, that, that would be fine.
Mr. Chair, I just want to remind my colleagues that this vote is about Steve Williams. It's not particularly about the process. To me, that's a whole different question. It's, it's, it just seems to me that we're putting two things together here and just, just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So of course, I too was listening to the comments tonight and everything. I'm very happy to have a chance to address it because one of the most common comments is that the children are being taught some type of DEI curriculum. It's absolutely false. There is no DEI curriculum being taught to the kids at the Metro Parks. The DEI program was for the employees. You know, in addition, as was pointed out, I did vote against one portion of the DEI program. I thought that it was too expensive. And I am the only, one of the seven commissioners to ever have voted against any portion of that. So the idea that somehow you're going to replace me with someone who will change the course of the DEI program is nonsense. It's interesting that you mentioned the hiring process, Commissioner Plank, because I was also the person that brought up issues in terms of legality and hiring. And we actually had a special lawyer that came in to address that. And they made changes to that DEI, DEI plan because of my comments. Now, I worked with that group. I didn't stand up afterwards and shout, I was right, but they changed the plan because of my request. Now, that wasn't in the meeting minutes, that was because I met with the director afterwards. And then they brought in, we have our own legal counsel, just like the county has. And they brought in a special, specific lawyer to address those and made changes based upon her evaluation of the proposed plan. So that may not be in the meeting minutes, but that's something that absolutely happened. The $6 million issue. Do you guys not see the contradiction between, you, you just had Spark in here tonight? We've had Spark for many years, that's a private entity. We contract with them, we give them money. We do the same thing for Meals on Wheels, the Catholic, Livingston County Catholic Charities with the daycare. We gave a building to Love Inc., Love in the Name of Christ. But yet we gave them a building at a dollar a year that they renovated, they make good use of during, during the recession. So, and, and in terms of coming up with matching dollars for grants to increase the value, the county does that all the time as well. I mean, we were already talking about that tonight. Prosecutor Reader talked about that. That's part of the whole point. You take your dollar amounts and you use those to match somebody else's and then you come up with more dollars. They do that all the time in the metro. And actually that has jumped with the new director, who, by the way, I did help hire, I will take credit for that. But it was a nationwide search. One of the finalists was a black male. We didn't hire based on skin color. We actually replaced a black male. He resigned amidst a lot of controversy. We replaced him with the best qualified candidate. That is what I expect and that is what we always push for. We actually lost our deputy last year, who was a middle-aged white male, died from a heart attack. He was a 30-year Parks employee. Just announced his replacement, another middle-aged white male who will be working for a middle-aged white female. This is not some kind of a quota system that they're implementing in the parks. And this is not something that is even being shared with our park customers, much less some, some ideology that's being impressed upon the children. Now, I was looking in my, and I do not have a map with me. I wish I had a Metro Parks map, but the easiest thing to look, if, if you look at that, and I did offer that to you all last time, because we have 13 parks here on Clinton Metro Parks. They follow the river basins. They circumnavigate the metro area. There is no Metro Park in Detroit, never has been. The people in the city of Detroit have been paying their millage, the same as ours, for 80 years. We're in Livingston County, we have less than 200,000 people. They still have almost four times that many in the city. This is not about race, this is about service to residents. We are not buying land, we are not building buildings. We are partnering with a nonprofit to be able to try and help them provide some more. It's basically staff time and help out with programs. Is anybody against teaching urban kids how to swim? I mean, they have a lack of pools, you're not going to go swim in the Detroit River. They're building an area down there. Drowning is one of the leading causes of death for kids under 18. You know, there's a whole variety of things. It's $6 million over seven years. Livingston County's contribution via the millage is only $2 million a year. Wayne County is over five times that much. So of course, if they say we have an underserved population, we contribute this large amount of money. Why would you not want to do that, especially if you have matching funds coming in and you're making it go that much further? Somebody commented on the roads today. You remember when Mike Crane was the one that implemented this? We can stretch our dollars, we only have a couple hundred thousand dollars. But if we partner with the townships, then we can do more roads. The townships howled about that, but many of them participated and they would put their requests in every year. It's a regular, it's just a regular practice. And the county does this all the time.
Can I?
Have I answered your question, Commissioner Zajak?
I'll yield to the chair.
The, no, I, I'm just going to comment that, you know, you've had five minutes, which is the amount of time that we allocate to commissioners when they go through Q and A. That, I'll, I'll give you another minute to wrap it up and then I want to move on and allow Ms. Carlon the same amount of time.
Sure, well, I want to make sure I answered the questions because I tried to address what Commissioner Plank talked about. And Commissioner Zajak, did you have anything that I did not answer?
Mr. Chair, if you'll allow, I can just add a couple of points.
Yes, go ahead.
I do appreciate the explanation, Mr. Williams, a couple of points on the oversight piece, the audit piece. I understand a little bit better the purpose. And then the second piece as it relates to. I understand a little bit better the purpose. And then the second piece as it relates to DEI, why the, I believe it was a $500,000 sum was supported. And then the details that are associated with that number and certainly correct the number if I have it wrong. And then lastly, budget, and that's a lot to do in a couple of minutes. So.
The budget is great. The, the Metro Parks are solid. I don't know where this rumor is coming from that they're somehow in crisis. Absolutely not. The Metro Parks Pension Fund is funded at 75 or 76%. The Recovery Healthcare is funded at 104%. Our, our, since the COVID crisis, the number of participants, or number of, you know, our entries have come in at 43% increase. You have 7,000 people a month with Livingston County zip codes coming into the parks. That's what the scanner is for on those, on those things that you receive. The total amount, that's, that's a multi-year budget and that was part of that is also because you account for staff time. So it's not actually money spent. It's how much money are you paying the incumbents in the job? And it is true. There was never a DEI director before Director McMillan hired somebody to fill that position. That part is true. And we're audited. We're, it's the same thing as, as the county. Every year there's an audit. I can give you a copy of the audit if you want. It's online. I can try and get hard copy if possible, if you would prefer that, so you can mark it all up. I mean, I sent this out at one point because I wanted to make the point. It showed that, and this was in 2018. This is a couple, this was in 2019. I sent out the 2018 because they show you that the taxpayers, the top 10 taxpayers for 2018 and 2008, top 10 employers for 2018 and 2008 for all five counties. And this was a demonstration of the value of the auto industry and the value of those people that are paying property taxes, and that's how the parks are funded. So there is no crisis. We're doing great. Our revenues are way up. And just like I said during the annual presentation, when I tried to chip in and answer some of the chair's questions, the reason that, that the capital expenditures have gone up is because there was a lot of deferred maintenance and improvements. You know, the dollar amounts that you're talking about are pretty tiny. We pay 6%. That's it toward, you know, this 2,000, 2,451,000 toward the total of the five county total for that one quarter mill. You know, we get a very huge.
Did he answer your question? Your question is answered, Commissioners AJ.
We have two parks here and five within just a couple of miles.
Mr. Williams, I would like to move on in the discussion. We're at the nine minute mark. I want to give, I want to be fair to both candidates and so I would ask that Ms. Carlon.
Point of order. It seems to me that our resolution only has one candidate. I would, I.
No, no, let me.
If that's the chair's wish, I just, I, I, I like Tammy. I, I, you know, I, I have nothing against that. I, you know, if, if, if you so think that, that that adds to our discussion about Steve, I'm happy, but I.
Yeah, I, I would say this, Commissioner Helsman, I would not have provided time for Mr. Williams to give his, his side of things without giving commissioners an opportunity to hear from Ms. Carlon. So I, it, it would be, I, I view it as unfair in the decision-making process. So anyway, Ms. Carlon, if you would like to take a few minutes and elaborate on your perspectives, that would be fine.
Well, I'm happy to answer any questions and if I have extra time, I'll read the rest of my statement. How about that? I've been very sick this week, so I'm working very hard to get through this.
I wouldn't, well, I'll, I'll start. I, I, I am concerned and the only reason, the only reason. Yes, I can say the reason that we're here tonight and that I'm had proposed you as a candidate is the issue of, of DEI. I know some people will look at it as a one issue and, but I look at it as a very, very important issue. Anyway, I would like your perspectives on DEI and critical race theory.
Well, DEI is definitely a big thing. It isn't a one-issue thing. It affects, it's affecting all of us. And I have fought critical race theory, DEI, social justice, all of those different things for many years. I, I teach on it all over the state of Michigan. I'm in national groups where we talk about these things. And I just did a podcast, two podcasts on the matter in Port Huron recently. So it is, it is a very big thing. It is not something that I think our money should be going towards. I don't want my hard-earned tax dollars going towards such a racist thing. Again, like I said in my statement, I feel very strongly that, you know, each, each person's, each person is, you know, of, of full value. But this DEI is different. It's promoting liberal ideology and it's being pushed in our schools. It's being pushed in society. We have people being told that they're bad because of their skin color. It is just not good. And I don't know if Mr. Williams has not read the DEI program, but he said some things that were actually against what's in the program. And it is online. Anybody can read it. The things that they're pushing in the program are different than a couple of the things that he had said. So I find the spending of our government very important. And I also have something to say about the budget.
Go, go ahead if you.
So the budget, the financials of the organization, certainly I have a lot more digging to do. I would have done more if I hadn't been so sick for last week, but there are many things to me that are concerning, that may not be jumping out to other people, such as inordinately high administrative costs. I think that everything that, you know, we spend our money on needs to have a direct and positive impact on the goal of whatever the organization is. So for Parks and Rec, it shouldn't be administrative costs, right? It should be directly related to what their goals are, what their mission is. And the money coming in outside of government money has not been growing either. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at.
Any commissioners with specific questions? Commissioner Plank?
I'm, thank you for coming up here. I, I have a question. It sounds like the board, the Metro Parks is really solid. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that they voted unanimously on the, the, the program, the DEI program plan. And I think it's been in place since 2020 for the employees. So basically this program already exists. And that, that board seems very solid and their, their values and where they're headed with, with, with the future plan of their employees. So my question for you is, is being on that board, how are you going to? What, what would be your plans to address the whole DEI? What would you do differently? Or what are, what, what would your plans be to, you know, oppose it? Would you make policy changes? Because I've, you know, I don't want to say that they're not open to other opinions or because I don't know the board that well, but I'm just curious, how, how, how would you go about doing that? How would you address those things? What would be your plan?
That's a great question. I would definitely not vote in favor of it going forward. In regards to what they're doing at present, I would hope that they would reword some things and take out the racism, especially against white people in, in their publications, on their website, et cetera. When I look at these materials, I actually don't feel welcome at the parks myself. So I think we need to be very careful in how we're wording these things. So you can have diversity, equity and inclusion at these parks without critical race theory. You know what I mean? These things that have more meaning than, than what they may appear. So say there's something on the website that says, you know, and there's implicit bias in all white people. You know, I would just ask that we change the wording of that. I can't change what they've done in the past, but I certainly wouldn't vote for things going forward that relate to this. And I would try to steer them in a direction that wouldn't get less white people coming to the, to the Parks and Rec. And like I said before, I have never been at any of the Metro Parks where I wasn't surrounded by people of color.
I want to continue with my questions and comments. I agree with you. I've been to Park, the Metro Parks before and I feel it's very diverse as well. I, I didn't feel that it was one group or another group. And this is years of going there. So I was kind of surprised by the DEI plan being implemented myself. I did have an opportunity to go through and read some, through the DEI plan. And Ms. Weller, who was on the call to public, actually stole my thunder because I wanted to quote it as well. A part of, you know, reading through what the plan was about, how, you know, who was, who was being addressed and and I took it as it was for the employees. And to try and make people who visit the park to feel that they were like the people they interact with, the employees or the workers at the park. So feeling sort of a part of the team or a part of the group, as they say. So, so I'm going to read this quote again because it was already read once, but this is the part of the plan that I think was sort of alarming to me. And it says, "As our national population becomes more diverse, members of historically marginalized groups are not turning to parks as they consider recreation choices." Well, first of all, I'd like to know where that came from, that study, because that, that just seemed odd to me, knowing that I've been to the parks and I've seen a group of people and maybe it exists, maybe there was a study done. I'm not sure. "As these groups continue to grow, we cannot ignore this trend, nor the market share associated with it." And when I read that, I thought market share. That sounds like dollar signs to me. And then further down on the policy, it says something along the lines of they're doing this to create more business and improve the bottom line. So I'm all for making money, but I just thought it was a mixed message of we care, but it's all because we want to make more money. And I, I felt like that was a really bad thing to include in a policy of something of that nature, that DEI plan. And I don't want it to come across that I'm a big supporter of that plan. I'm just saying, after reading through some of this, that's, that was my takeaway. So I, that's why I asked the question, what would you do? So it sounds like you've read the, the plan as well.
Commissioner Plank, I had the same response you did when I read that.
Okay, so I, I think that that needs to, to be addressed moving forward, whether it's with you, Ms. Carlon, or with Mr. Williams.
Anybody else?
Mr. Sheriff, at least one question. This, this position is you are representing, you know, the, would be representing Livingston County. You would also be representing this board, okay? And you know, what are your natural connections to this board and what are your natural connections to Livingston County? And how would you? You know, you know, I think you just recently moved to our county. So in, in that, I think that's maybe your disadvantage. If there's any such thing as a disadvantage in this, explain how you would represent Livingston County and reach out to the people of Livingston County.
Well, I am, I will be, would be extremely proud to represent my county, Livingston County, and the Livingston County Commission as the representative on that board. I have not lived here physically long, but I've long done service in Livingston County. I am known statewide for my activism. And I got to tell you, every time I came to Livingston County, I would say, geez, I love it here. I'm going to move here one day. And everybody always thought, it must be pulling their leg. So now I remind them, did you think I was pulling your leg when I said that? And they go, oh, yeah. Here I am. But I love Livingston County. I always have and I feel right at home here. I felt at home here before I moved here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Anybody else?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you for being here. And, and I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we're only voting on one issue right now, but question is, what possessed you to apply for this seat? Why did you apply for, to be seated on the Metro Parks Board? And have you ever been to a Metro Parks Board meeting?
I applied for the position because Wes did a bunch of research and he was not happy with what he's seen with the current person that's serving us in Livingston County. And he went through a bunch of different things. He told me what he saw. And I said, well, now I know why you're calling.
Okay. So my question then would be to the county administrator, if you know this answer, and I, I, I can't get out of my Zoom and look. Was your application submitted before the deadline of April 30th?
I don't remember.
That was the deadline on the, on the website? Okay, did you submit it after April 30th?
I don't remember. I apologize.
Okay. There, there were five people that applied. It wasn't, it's not just two. Five people have applied. It went through personnel and that was their recommendation back to us is what we have in front of us today. And I was just curious what, what possessed you to want to apply for it? And had you ever been to a, have you ever been to the Metro Park Board meeting?
I've never been to a board meeting, but I have wonderful skills to bring to the table. And I would be a strong representative for the taxpayers and citizens of Livingston County.
Okay, thank you. And, and I'll just say, I have known Steve Williams for many years. I, I met him when he was first running for state representative. That was back in the, that was a few, a couple decades ago. Anyway, he, he's often referred to as an officer and a gentleman and, and he's so tight, he squeaks. I'll tell you that. I, I remember that from when he was sitting up here as a commissioner. Minutes don't always reflect conversation and you can read our minutes and, and know that the clerk just needs to basically put in there, did the motion pass? There isn't specifics. So we don't know the discussion that was taken at the Metro Parks Board. The DEI program is for the employees only. And sometimes we have to think outside Livingston County. We have to look at what this whole Metro Park encompasses. So I know Steve, I, I am not questioning your ability, Tammy Carlon, to sit in the seat. But I, I've never met you before. I do not know you. I know Steve Williams and I know the type of job and, and the integrity that he has. That's all I have. Thank you.
I did want to just add that it goes beyond just the employees based on things like what Brenda just read, read.
Thank you.
Programs to bring, right, and diversity in.
Commissioner Plank?
By not applying at a deadline, does that mean that she's not a qualified candidate? Is there, is there like policies or procedures that we have to go by? I'm curious because this could be a moot point if that was the case and that concerns me.
I know that the administrator sent us an email today with the resumes, correct? I can get out of my Zoom and look. I can get out of my Zoom and look, um, but can you please just tell me the date? Thank you. Thank you.
Cause in all fairness, I feel as if that's the case.
You're gonna have to speak into the microphone.
I just feel that, uh, you know, uh, there's policies in place for a reason. And, um, if this, if Tammy, Ms. Corlone, applied after, I would say that, you know, we, we need to think hard about, you know, our policies and do we have exceptions to the rules? And address those.
Mr. Chair, I, I would say that we don't have any policy. And that's part of what the discussion is going to be next time, but there was a deadline given online, in that, you know, and to me, you know, my, my point of order is still at this point. When, when I entered into this, I had the possibility of doing a process or filling, asking Steve, you know, putting Steve in the position until we did the process or to bring Steve straight to the board and not go through the process. That's the decision I made. Right now, we are questioning, you know, my decision, you know? You know, I have, as a chair, I have some authority. And the committee brought one name forward. Right now, uh, if, if Steve's name doesn't go, then, then we have other choices we have to make. But as I looked at the nine people that are sitting up here, in my heart, I said, Steve will be, that's my, that's my judgment. I could be wrong. If all nine of us vote, think Steve's going to get in. And the thing that I hate the most is to have a process when we know the end before we begin and we go through the motions anyways, and we waste everybody's time. I, I, I hate that. That is the reason why I put Steve's name forward. The, uh, committee agreed two to one on that. And so any discussion at this point, we have to get the main motion taken care of first. And then decide what we're going to do, or we need to lay a table of the motion and say, go to a process. You, you know, right now, we have a motion in front of us. We need to deal with it. We need to say yes or no or table.
Yes, no, I, I agree.
That's what we need to do and to, and to, and to bring, you know, I, I like Tammy. I agree with what Tammy's doing and all that sort of thing. And it's nothing against her. It's just, we have a process. Let's follow the process. Whatever we think, you know, whatever happens, happens. And because there's a, there's other considerations besides these two people. I've talked to people, there's other considerations. Some people might vote no. It has nothing to do with Steve or Tammy. It has to do with some other consideration. I don't know what those considerations are, but we need to take a vote. We're, we're missing a person. The question is, if we have a four, four vote, can Carol ask to reconsider when she comes back? If she would be the fifth vote? Is that, you know, I, I, that's a, a question that I have. I don't know. But i- i- it seems to me, we just need to follow the process and see what happens.
I, I'm going to go ahead and, um, uh, make a motion to amend the resolution to insert Tammy Carlon's name and strike Steve Williams' name. That is a motion to amend the resolution, putting in Tammy Carlon's name in replace of Steve Williams.
Mr. Chair, Mr. McNulty has his hand raised. Mr. McNulty.
Procedurally speaking, you can't do an amendment which defeats the original resolution that's been moved. You can vote on this one and then make a new motion. You can do, but you can't make a, procedurally, you can't make an amendment which in of itself defeats the original resolution that's been moved.
Then I withdraw the amendment. Did you, uh, Administrator Bird, did you?
Looking through our files, Natalie's also searching. It looks like it came in somewhere between May 4th and May 6th. There was a consolidation of applications on May 4th. I did not see it. Then I did see it on the May 6th consolidation. Now, the ad did say on the website, it was, it was accessible after.
What we have, we have in the past, we have had applicants say, oh, I forgot that, I forgot. And I, can I put my name in? And and we said, no. The, the deadline was X date. Because then you're opening up a whole new can of worms. So there's a date for a reason. And that's why I was curious. I was wondering if, how many of the five that applied, what their date is. Now, if we received it on the sixth, did, um, did Ms. Carlon, you know, is it dated April 30th? You know, what? But when did we actually receive? But that is my question, but we do have a motion on the table.
Another question, was there a?
Commissioner Lawrence had the floor. Are you?
No, I, I'm done. I'm just, was curious and I'm hoping that we could, I'm just curious on, on the date.
Okay. Commissioner Gross, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, I just looked through my pack of resumes. One dated March 16th, one dated April 29th.
Commissioner Gross, we cannot hear you.
I just looked at my pack of resumes.
And there's one dated March 16th, one dated April 29th. And there are three that are not dated at all. That being Steve Williams, Tammy Corlone and Tom Janego.
Just for information.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to call the question.
Call the question, is there support? I'll, I'll support. You need two thirds of vote to, um, and calling the question means we are done with the debate. And that we are going to vote, but it requires two thirds in this, we, that would mean we would need, somebody has to get a calculator. We need.
Six.
Six.
That's two thirds.
Sixths of nine is two thirds and we have less than that. So five wouldn't make it. I don't think five would make it. I think six has.
That's true. Yeah. So we would need six. So on the motion to, uh, call the question, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helzerman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion to call the question carries.
All right. So, um, on the, uh, main motion, um, roll call, please.
Commissioner Helzerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
No.
Commissioner Zajak.
No.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. Commissioner Gross.
No.
Commissioner Plank. Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader and Commissioner Nakagiri.
No.
Motion fails.
So the motion failed. Um, we'll move on in the agenda. The item 13 is a discussion item.
Mr. Chair, uh, I don't know if this is fitting here. This seat will be vacated, uh, in about five days.
Actually, Commissioner Helzerman, I, I was told, I haven't seen it with my own two eyes, but I was informed this afternoon that by statute, the, uh, until somebody selected the incumbent carries over. And that's, we need to confirm that. So, but, uh,
Okay. If, if, if that is so, I, I would, uh, because I, I, otherwise I would move that Steve Williams fill this position until, uh, until, fill otherwise.
And Mr. Chair, I would like to know, um, the date that these resumes, applications for the seat were actually physically received by the county. Whether by mail or email.
Yes. No, I, I think everybody has that question. So. Item 13, this is a discussion item. Um, it was a, um, draft proposal by Commissioner Zajak. Uh, I put it on the agenda because in the Personnel Committee meeting, I concluded that, um, it would be best to have, um, more commissioners chime in so that when the Personnel Committee crafts a new policy procedure that it's gotten, you know, uh, input from any commissioner that's interested. So I, I opened it up to, um, Commissioner Zajak to discuss his proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think, uh, it's also apropos considering the circumstances of item 12 today. The, the issue that I've had since, uh, joining this commission is, um, one that took some buildup, but there's, there seems to be an inconsistency in the process and, and the word process was used quite a bit of times tonight as we discussed the previous appointment. So, uh, I think my concerns were legitimized. Commissioner Helzerman also did pass out, um, his, his kind of bullet point list to commissioners, which I hope, uh, reads in parallel to my draft resolution. I took a great consideration of Mr., of Commissioner Helzerman's, um, key points of interest, uh, and I, and I believe anyways, but I'm biased, uh, towards my own drafting. Uh, I believe I incorporated them into this, uh, proposed resolution. What this resolution does, uh, for, for my colleagues is it sets a process with key deadlines, key timing, and actually, uh, Commissioner Lawrence's question about deadlines of application, I believe is, is captured, uh, by, by one of the items here that, that actually sets a, a closing period and then reporting period to the commissioners. Uh, one key issue we've seen, uh, time and again, is the commissioners, starting with the Personnel Committee and then making its way to the full board, uh, have a lack of information. And I don't believe it's been, um, because of a, a faulty issue, uh, with administration or those charged with doing, um, the initial screening. I, I believe actually we've seen great progress. Once this has become a, a point of discussion, uh, that administration through, uh, Administrator Berg's leadership and the support from Natalie and team, uh, as well as, uh, with HR and in our previous months, uh, personnel, uh, related items, uh, as, at least as it relates to the, uh, zoning commission or the planning commission, um, that great work was done in that culling, culling down period from, I believe the number was 23 total applicants down to five. And then we kind of hit a roadblock and it's very similar to the roadblock that we are faced with here today, uh, in our previous, uh, discussion over the resolution. So, uh, I know it's long, it's three pages, but I believe it's, it captures what we need to have happen in a process. And I believe it also captures the flexibility, uh, that is of interest to my colleagues. Um, for instance, the ability of commissioners to, um, the request interviews, the ability of, of commissioners to participate in interviews. Uh, and there, there were a couple of points that, that have been discussed since the Personnel Committee, uh, discussion that I think need to be addressed and improved. Uh, one of those is in item number two, which is on page 62 of 62 of our agenda, uh, where it references upon advice and input of administration and others. Uh, it's, it's quite clear that, um, department heads are, at least it was clear in my head when I drafted this, that department heads were, were included in others, but it's clear now that, everyone didn't read it that way. So the intent was certainly that affected departments be, uh, included within that others, advice from others piece. And then the other key input, um, that I, that I'd like to highlight is, uh, it does call for the board chair to make a recommendation and it's very similar to the process that we follow on the federal level. Uh, our, our executive makes a recommendation, the legislature vets it and makes a determination. I'll note that that same process does not exist at the state level and we have, uh, many issues, uh, that we've seen in the past. The legislature does get to have some input, but I don't think ultimately they have any say. At least that's what we've seen here recently. So what this would capture is a process of effectively an executive that, uh, as the other eight commissioners having input to electing that executive type of role in this application, would have, uh, a level of oversight, then followed by additional oversight by the Personnel Committee and certainly final oversight by the full board. I, I appreciate very much the comments, um, from, from, uh, several of our department heads, many of them being elected, uh, and the importance of them to have input in this process and the statutory nature of some of these appointments. Uh, and I believe that it's captured here and there's accountability that exists here. That, uh, I'm, I'm, you know, Mr. Chair, I'm perfectly willing to tell you when you've got it wrong and I will do that, uh, in this process in terms of, uh, you know, a recommended appointment. So, uh, I know I'm comfortable doing that. I obviously can't speak for my colleagues, but I have confidence that they are as well. And it sets a, a precedent that is repeatable. Uh, there's no more questions, uh, in my mind anyways, of what we've done before. There's no questions of, of, of issue as it, as it arises between, um, uh, different, uh, applications of this process, whether it be to a jury board selection or a, um, uh, a planning commission selection or this Metro Park selection. Should commissioners have interest in, 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 and want to participate in this process? The avenue is there. And, um, it leaves little room, at least in my mind, for doubt on the application of the process. So that's my explanation. And, and for my colleague, uh, former Judge Carol Sue Reader, I rely on my briefs for, uh, the remainder of my input here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any, uh, questions or feedback for Commissioner Zajak on the process? Uh, Commissioner Plank.
I, I'm so happy to see this because I feel like, um, it, it, it's going to streamline the whole process. It's very, uh, transparent and, um, we will not have to go through something like this in the future. So I appreciate you, uh, the work that you did on this and all the people that, um, helped you to write this. So I'm very, very pleased. Uh, I think this is a big win for the, for the board and, um, look forward to implementing it as quickly as possible.
Anybody else?
I, I'd like to hear from our Personnel Chair.
If I could.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay. I, uh, you know, if you've heard me very long, that I am, uh, a person that my, my saying about a policy is it says too much and it says too little and we don't know the difference. And to me, uh, if you look at mine, I, I says, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We need to, and, and to me, the reason that, that I didn't take it up in committee was that in my mind, it was too detailed. And there's some things that we can, that we can get without resolution. I, you know, I've done, I've, uh, there's two things that I've given to you. The, the first is a two-page, two-pager. That, uh, that is, uh, all of the, uh, going through all of the, um, the, uh, list that Natalie gave me, uh, that's available on, uh, on Board Manager. And going through all the names that we will be, uh, that we will be, uh, voting on this year. Okay? You know, if I understand, that's one of his, one of the things. You know, uh, you may, maybe we do need a policy. I, I, in my mind, we need information that's timely and. in my mind, we need information that's timely, and in, in, in my thinking, this is too busy of a resolution. And the, the other thing is we're dealing with volunteers. We're dealing with volunteers. I, all my life, I've been in organizations that depend on volunteers. Okay, you make the requirements too high, and you will not get volunteers. Okay, we need to have a balance, I, you know. Okay, you want to, to volunteer to go to meetings four times a year, and we need your resume. Okay, we already put them through a background check. You know, I, I gave this analogy to Wes, you know, this is, I picture it as, let's make a feeding policy for zoo. Okay? You're gonna say, feed people, feed, feed the animals in a timely manner. You're not gonna get really detailed, you're gonna get, you know, general. And to me, yes, we need a clear process, but you look at these things and you say, most of these names have come to us from the directors of these places who've done the vetting of these people, and Mitch says, Mitch's proposal says, we do all the vetting. You know, we put all these, these, you know, I, and you look through, the, the second one is the thirty-eight, the single pages of the thirty-eight boards that we fill. The left column is the, the, the years of the terms, there are some are lifetime because they're ninety-nine years. The second one is irrelevant because it's the term limits, there's no term limits, and the right column is the number of people on that committee, okay, so the local Emergency Planning Committee has fifty people on it. Okay? You know, our general policy needs to fit all of these. And, and they're volunteers, I, I, I am all for us having the contact information, and we have that of these people a week or two before, and we call for them, and we say, the first thing I say when I call them, I says, thank you for your service. You know, and the people that I call say, well, this is the first time anybody's ever called me about this. You know, this, the, the, the second thing is if, you know, I, I, I said this to Wes, I said, there's thirty-eight of these, and there's nine of us, so that means each one of us should be in charge of four or five of these, okay? And that person that's in charge of that committee should shepherd these things coming through. But some of these are, are by the chair, you know, the, and some of them are by, you know, some of them are, you know, the, the, oh, the, the canvassing board, okay? There has to be two Democrats and two Republicans, okay? And the Democrats pick the Democrats, and the Republicans pick the Republicans, okay? So we're gonna say, okay, you Democrats have to come and come before us, you know, that's our policy. You come before us, and we're gonna pick which Democrat we want to have. Okay, and do the same thing with the Republicans, I, you know. There, there, there is give and take in this, and to me, it's, it's a longer conversation than just, you know, three pages of resolution. I, the first time when I took this, I said, Wes, we need to have a discussion of these people, of everybody on the board to let, see what you want to do before we start doing it. And to me, that's what we should be doing here today, not particularly talking about one plan or another plan, or, you know, or pitting, you know, Mitch against me or me against Mitch, that, I don't think that's Mitch's or my idea here, but I, I would just like to hear from you because, you know, let, let's take the situation that we had right now, okay? What should the Personnel Committee have done? Let's, let's talk about a real case, okay? Okay, the process, okay, so we have, if we take five people, who's going to, who's going to narrow those down, okay? With the Planning Commission, the, the administration narrowed it down to five. And then they were gonna narrow it down further, and I, I put this out, and I says, I think the, the Chairman of the Planning, or the, of the Personnel and the, and the Chairman of the Board should be included. Well, they did. Okay, we have an administration that's very responsive to us. You know, so we need to have a conversation instead of giving a directive, you know, in one month they shall. Yeah, you know, to me, some things just don't, anyways, what, as a discussion, what should, how should the process have, have, have happened? I, I think if we talk about concrete things, we'll get farther, you know.
Yeah, I, I would respond this way, Commissioner Helsner, man, you know, it wasn't my intention to craft a policy tonight, it was to present information to commissioners to give them something to chew on, if they saw something immediately, they could chime in, but I, I think having something to start with allows the amendment process to move forward. That, so if there are specific things that are, that individual commissioners don't like with the process, you know, I, I would ask that they, you know, get with Mitch and, and, and I would, and I would say, you know, even the administration, which plays a big role in this thing, to, to amend, it, in my view, it's easier to have something to work with and then amend it. I, that's, anyway, it, it wasn't to craft the, the policy tonight, so.
No, I understand that, but, but we do, if we have, if we have something, what should we have done? Then, that, then we can have ideas, because that's, yeah, I agree with you, we need to find ideas. What should we have done?
Commissioner Gross.
Mr. Chairman, in, in looking, in looking at this proposal, I, I refer myself back to the most recent conversation we had regarding the, here on Clinton Metro Parks Authority. Anyway, we had five. We had, we had five candidates, and where, were they vetted? Was there any interview with, with all of them? I, I had the impression that we really only talked to two. And, and so there is definitely a process problem that needs to be rectified. And, and whether it's this or, or some modification of it, we need to do something. I would have liked to have gotten some information on the other three candidates for the Metro Park position. To the best of my knowledge, they weren't interviewed.
Okay, so you're saying we should have a?
Commissioner Helsner, I would like to chair the meeting.
Sure, okay, sure.
Any, any, Commissioner Gross, are you yielding the floor?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Reader.
This is a very important thing. It's now ten minutes after nine. I think this is something that we need a work session for, where we can do it in an informal manner, and everybody share their opinions, and maybe come up with a plan. But this isn't gonna work tonight.
Any, anything else? Yeah, I, I agree with you, I think would like, it is late, we still have a call to the public to do. So if there is no objection, I will close out the discussion and move on to the call to the public. I don't see any objection, so the call to the public, anybody wishing to address the board has three minutes. We ask that you provide your name and address before starting, and that's it. So, anybody in the room, we'll start with the room, Mr. Hunley.
Long night, I'll be brief. Bruce Hunley, three zero five six East Coon Lake Road, at your first call to the public, there was someone that mentioned, they wanted to know what the money was going for the, for the veterans' millage. Well, that number was, that was partially entered tonight, we're buying a washing machine for our veterans that need it. But the, the expansion of the five thousand foot square, a new office that we have down there, it's a great thing that's going on, we're building it up, there's gonna be a lot of new features going on down there. The other thing that we're doing is we're hiring people, we're sending people to federal training. This county is already getting a reputation for being one of the leading counties. Very few counties offer door-to-door veteran service to take the veterans to, to their medical appointments. We do that. Very few counties, if any, do that at all. And that's all through the generosity of our, our citizens who, who put that money forward. We have some good people working over there. I mean, just today, I was working with a veteran last week, he's going in for heart surgery on Thursday, and we got his intent to file put in today so that, you know, if things don't go well, at least his wife is covered. Another veteran that I was working with, he was in Macomb County, and we can't give him any financial help because the millage is for Livingston County veterans, but we can't advise him. I talked to him, and I said, how did things go with talking to our counselors? He said they need to give lessons to Macomb County. Because his, his claims were denied, and his claims were denied, they opened the claim up for him again. It didn't cost us anything to do that, took no money out of the millage to do that. But his claim is alive and well now, and our office are the ones that got that veteran. So, not to hold you up all night, but, oh, and I would like to mention, if anybody has any questions, like the, the one call to the public person did, all they have to do is look at our website, they're more than welcome to come to our meetings. Once again, we don't have anybody show up to our meetings, and we're open. They're more than welcome to come, we're pretty informal. So if they want to know, we have all our financials, and if they want the financials, all they have to do is call the office, they don't even have to foil you them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunley. Anybody else in the, Mr. Williams?
Steve Williams, five one one H and T Road, Howell. So regarding the process, you know, it's kind of the height of arrogance to come in and say that for the last fifty-five years, the Boards of Commissioners have been doing a crappy job, and as a brand-new commissioner, I'm gonna fix everything. When I came on the HMCA Board to begin with, there were interviews with everybody. I believe that Commissioner Lawrence was the Chair at that time, either that or Commissioner Griffith. You know, you actually have two chairs that are on the board now, and you're telling them that everything they've done in the past was wrong, and you've got to somehow recreate it. And at the same time, this resolution is giving up your power. You all were elected to do something, and you're gonna cede it to the Chair? We don't have an executive form of county government here. Has actually been rejected multiple times. You have a county commission, you have a Chair, you don't have a county executive, and you do have a county administrator. So if you follow that proposal, you would be voluntarily ceding the responsibility that you ran for office to get. Doesn't make sense. If you're not gonna do the job, don't run for the job. Let somebody else step in. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your time tonight.
Anybody else in the room here? We'll move to the Zoom participants. I see some Zoom hands raised. We'll start with Jacqueline Pike.
Thank you again so much for recognizing me, and thank you for taking all of our concerns into consideration this evening. I know it's gone very long tonight, I'm just gonna kind of go a different direction and ask very quickly, I've looked over the public, the, the Howell City websites, City of Howell Public Works, everything I can try to find to find rules or etiquette for the Commissioners' meetings, and I can't seem to find those listed anywhere. Oh, yeah, my address, eight zero three Fowler Street, which is why I'm asking. I don't see the rules or the etiquette listed anywhere, so my email is, every one of you have my email, from the emails that I've sent in to you, I was gonna request if you can either, I know you can't answer questions, that this is not a dialogue, as you stated before, but if one of you could please either email me the rules that state where we have to state our addresses, or the etiquette for public meetings, I just, I feel that if someone had, you know, not myself, and hopefully not anyone, but if someone were to try and be that person that wants to just be a nasty person, or, or do harm to someone, I don't feel like it should be something that we would need to publicly state addresses, because unless it's, you know, basic public knowledge, someone shouldn't be able to have the address, so again, happy to follow any rules that are set forth, but if you could please show me, or tell me where I can find those that states that we have to do that, I would greatly appreciate that. Again, thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you, it's Jessica Garcia. After hearing from many people on the call tonight, including many of our Commissioners and Tammy Carlon, they clearly don't know anything about critical race theory. So I'm going to review my previous comments for the people in the back. Critical race theory is a framework established more than forty years ago by lawyers and scholars of color, not white liberals, asking us not to judge people by their race, but to acknowledge that people are judged by their race, and that access to resources and opportunities have been limited and allocated, both legally and de facto, throughout history and into today. One only need to look at disparities in housing, education, or healthcare for this evidence. It is not about dividing race, it is not about teaching white people to be embarrassed or ashamed of their race. It does not identify individual white people as inherently racist or oppressors. It is a call for all of us to improve our systems and their functionality, and we cannot move forward productively as a community without an objective look at how we got there. To those suggesting that my PhD in sociology and experience teaching race ethnicity in higher education are relevant and should not be raised, this is a problem. You cannot dismiss out of hand decades of education, research, and actual job experience on any given topic as unrelated. Would you want a plumber or an electrician working on your house that watched a YouTube video? There is nothing more relevant than education and experience. If you don't know about critical race theory, the books are out there. If this issue is as important to you as you make it out to be, seek out the education and the experience to learn what it is really about. If you can't be bothered to go beyond your favorite news channel or social media feed, then I will repeat myself again. Please sit down.
Thank you. Next up is Jen Garcia.
Thank you, Jennifer Garcia, nine eight one five, Winbrook Lane, Howartland, Michigan. I'd like to applaud and echo what Jessica Garcia just spoke on. I'm overwhelmed, exhausted, and baffled to hear the misinformation being shared around DEIs and CRT. The Metro Parks are implementing DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion Platform for their employees. I know this has been discussed, but it just seems as though- I know this has been discussed, but it just seems as though it's hitting a wall for some people. CRT, which is not even a part of the park's proposal, has actually is an acronym for two different things, what Dr. Garcia just spoke on, critical race theory, which is a theory and concept around systemic racism. And then cultural relevant teaching, which is an educational platform in where we are embracing cultural differences. Here nor there, I feel like it's a waste of my time to try to educate some of the people here who are just outright denying it and using anecdotal observations versus data and and education. My biggest concern is that I think our voters need to be very aware come next election, that it seems to be that Commissioner Nakagiri is here to just politically grandstand on every possible topic he can. And it's becoming exhausting. I imagine that your counterparts are also exhausted to have to sit through these lengthy meetings, which are often irrelevant and go nowhere. Between the resolutions to strip away reproductive rights of the county female employees to diverging from the state's mask mandate, to now this particular nitpicking and micromanaging of a statewide park employee policy. None of these are relevant to the needs of the county. They it's time that our county Commissioners focus on the needs of the people in the county to focus on bringing a climate and community that is welcoming to everyone, improving roads, supporting veterans, thank you very much, and ensuring that we have safe waters in our county. The governance that directly impacts our county's citizens. And it is baffling to me that we have a predominantly white board presiding over a predominantly white community claiming that DII is unnecessary in a county that is wildly known for its historic racism and still has concerns today. If you don't believe that, then we should question why we don't have such a diverse community. People of color are not comfortable coming here. They do not want to live here, and they do not come here for recreation, particularly.
You have 10 seconds.
And that speaks volumes to the work that this county needs to do in its equity process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Robert Spalding.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. First of all, my name is Robert Spalding. I am work for the Drain Commissioners Office as the DPW Coordinator. I am salary, so I haven't been getting paid anymore for the last four hours on the meeting, just to FYI. I just wanted to add some input on the the procedure for nominations for the committees. One of the things is, is I hope the suggestion from Commissioner Reader about having a work session includes some department heads and some other people outside of the Commissioners, which I'm sure you will include. Commissioner Helsner had a very good point about that the boards are very different. Some are have are going to have a lot of applicants that are interested, where you can have a selection process. There are some boards and some that I do where you may have very little interest. Which kind of leads to one thing that I did not see in the in the procedure is establishing maybe processes for open positions with deadlines and common posting of the positions where we have, if we have an opening, there's a process that everyone maybe goes through the same procedure in a timeframe so that everyone has access to the information that may be interested in the position with with certain deadlines. There was discussion earlier about dates when things came in. We do that with our job postings. We have pretty firm deadlines that we abide by to create uniformism and fairness across all the applicants. And lastly, the the one thing that I wanted to point out is, and I've talked with two of the Commissioners, is I wholly respect that you guys are ultimately responsible for the appointments. And I so I understand that you guys want to know who you're appointing. Because if improper person is appointed, they're probably going to be going after you guys for blame versus maybe a department head. But I will, I would hope that you would respect the department heads and county employees. You do this all the time when we hire people in our departments. We hire full time jobs for people making $80,000 a year with no county commissioner input besides the job description and the pay. You entrust that to the departments to make those decisions. And and I would just hope that you that that trust and respect is carried on with board appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Connie Robinson.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, Mr. Williams adamantly denied that there was any indoctrination or teaching of race to any children. As as related to the DEI. And Commissioner Lawrence stated that the Metro Parks DEI was directed only to their employees. I would like to call attention to a regular meeting of the Huron Clinton Metropolitan Authorities Board of Commissioner on Thursdays, Thursday, September 10, 2020, at 1:00 PM. Director McMillan read a statement related to the Metro Parks DEI efforts at that meeting. I am now quoting from that statement by Director McMillan. Quote, "Today, I'm asking you to vote yes, but that is not enough on a new initiative to develop a speaker series that will bring local, regional, and national level leaders to future board meetings to speak on issues of racism, inclusion, diversity, access, and equity. As part of this program, we would also seek to make the speaker available for interactive discussions with staff as well as a presentation open to the public with a particular emphasis on school age children where possible." End quote. And I would also, I I also have a question for the person who said people of color are not welcome in here. I I'd like to really know what that statement was based on, besides opinion from someone who clearly wants to insist that Livingston County is racist. I I I take offense to that. And for those who get very exhausted by board meetings, I would suggest they use that time to take a nap. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Joellen Pissarchik.
Thank you. Joellen Pissarchik, 4119 Howell Place, Howell. As a former Human Resource Manager, I've done a lot of hiring, recruiting, and training of people in fair employment practices. And I would just want to say that I thank the board for putting forth a formal process for appointing people to board positions because the experience gained and the launching pad that it may provide people needs to be equitably and fairly offered. So having a process in place makes that happen. As any organization grows and the tasks of that organization become more complex, I think it's important to formalize the process and organize it in such a way that there's consistency, transparency, and clarity in the for people that wish to apply to those positions or who are asked to apply to those positions. So I think that's a great procedural thing to put in place and along with the posting of the positions and the timeframes and so on. One more thing I wanted to say, in the interest of diversity, equity, and inclusion, I thank the board for allowing all of us to comment here, whether we have PhDs or not, and regardless of our race or color. I I appreciate that. And I thank you for listening, everyone, because I think diverse opinions and diverse perspectives, sounds like they're all welcome in front of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lori's iPhone.
Hi, my name is Lori, and I live in Bright Michigan. Thank you, guys. And this has been an awful long night, so I'm just going to say every single word that came out of Connie Robinson's mouth. I agree with totally. So you don't have to hear me repeat it again. And I want to say thank you again to you, Wes, and a few of you on the board. I appreciate everything you've done. And again, every single thing Connie Robinson said, I agree with 100%. She said it very well. And thank you to all of you for staying up this late. And I just want to say again, thank you, Wes, and have a good night and hope everything goes the way we expected to. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Next up is David.
Hi, everyone. Thank you again, Wes and Commissioners. I appreciate this this long night. Listen to all the comments so far. Appreciate everybody's input. I have a whole lot of comments. I'd like to say in response to the doctor, but I think I will hold off and just direct them to some of the Commissioners who appear to be on the fence, should and when this comes to a vote. I asked them to consider one question. I know that that there's some some debate as to whether this was one small mistake that Steve did or whether it's a big one. I contend it's a very big mistake. And so I'd like the Commissioners to ask and to get a good feel for now that this wolf has been let into the sheep's pen, how do we deal with it? How are we going to get? Because I believe that that motion is passed, $6 million is in effect, the actions are taking place. How do we? How do we get out of here now? I think we need to be asking Steve or whoever is the next person, how do we get ourselves out of this pit we dug ourselves into? Thank you.
Thank you. I see Jane Suarez forward waving at us, so she'll be up next.
Okay, I just have to answer. Jessica Garcia. I guess if I would give her some advice, she needs to work on her delivery. Not so much what she's saying, but if she would work on her delivery in terms of how she comes across as arrogant. People might be more willing to hear what she says. And and that would be a better way of approaching people. I think that might be helpful. That's what I would I would I would have her work on for her homework. When when she after, when she goes, she has her her me time tonight. So that would be her assignment. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else with the Zoom. Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to end the meeting on a positive note here. We are coming into competition sports season. There's many sports teams in our counties that are off competing. I'm actually, as soon as we adjourn, going to the softball game at Bennett Park for Howell versus Grant Blank. The Heartland, Brighton, Pinkney, Howell sports teams, I believe Fallerville as well. Have many competitors in state final competition for track and field. There's baseball teams still going, so encourage my colleagues to attend and support the youth in our county. And thanks, everyone, for productive, productive discussion tonight. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Don't see any Zoom hands raised. I will look through the pictures on Zoom. You don't see anybody waving at us, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Helsner.
Support Zajak.
Motion by Helsner and support by Zajak. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith is absent. Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.